Members to press your mute button. What I'll do is I want to first have a preliminary executive session for discussion of two matters. Then what I'll end up doing is I will make the call and we will unmute you. Or you can unmute yourself when it's your time to present. Otherwise, it makes sense for you to just mute. If you need to get our attention, you can raise your hand or you can send a chat directly to a Town of Fairfield host. You can hit a chat direct to that to Mr. Decker. So please connect your mute and all board members stay unmuted, please. The first item that we have, May 21, 2021, executive session. I have two items on our agenda. The first item is approval of minutes of March 5, 2020. I'd entertain a motion to approve and I'd like whoever is moving to state your name and then indicate that you're making that motion.
Brady.
Thank you, Katie.
Approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Terry Keegan.
Terry, Jane beat you out on the second. I'm going to take Jane's second. Okay, for the board members, any discussion of the approval of the minutes? Hearing no discussion. Hearing no discussion. Now bring it to a vote. Jane, what is your vote on approval of the minutes? Katie, what is your vote on approval of the minutes?
Yes.
Terry, what is your vote on approval of the minutes?
Yes.
Sharon, what is your vote on approval of the minutes?
Yes.
Thank you, and I vote yes. Unanimous. Second item was approval of secretary's fees. Entertain a motion to approve those fees.
So moved, Terry Keegan.
Thank you, Terry. Is there a second?
Second, Sharon Strozer.
Thank you, Sharon. Any discussion? Hearing none, bring it to a vote. Terry, what is your vote?
Yes.
Katie, what is your vote?
Yes.
Sharon, what is your vote?
Yes.
Jane, what is your vote?
Yes.
Yes, that's unanimous. And before I begin the call, I just want to make a couple observations and point things out. The first is the matters 8A and 8B on our regular docket are continued. That is 231 Sterling Street Lot A, 231 Sterling Street Lot B. Those are continued to June 11. The remaining matters will go forward. I'll also point out, please be patient with us while we conduct the meeting by teleconference. First time that we've done this for the zoning board of appeals. And so just be patient with us. Make sure I hear everyone and give everyone an opportunity to speak. But it's going to go a little slower than normal for the people that are used to the hearings in the chair. So we're just going to take our time, go through the applications. And it's almost going to be a little bit of a school teacher. I'm going to have to try to be and be calling on people instead of kind of being an open, more of an open forum, allowing people to come up. So when there is an opportunity to, for discussion or comments from public who are calling in, if you raise your hand, I will give us plenty of time to recognize you. If you're in favor of an application, I will end up giving you plenty of time to make sure you can come forward and let us know by either raising your hand or chatting directly with myself or with Mr. Decker, who is listed as Town of Fairfield host. Okay? Now I'm going to begin the call. Zoning Board of Appeals, May 21, 2021 shall come to order. Again, we're having this teleconference video pursuing, meeting pursuant to Governor Executive Order 7B, which allows us to conduct the hearings in this fashion. I will be calling the matters that are up for consideration in order of the docket. I'll call the first matter. Wait until I actually call upon you to begin your application. I will tell you it's time for you to begin your application. If you wish for any, anything to be shown, make sure you advise Mr. Decker if you want parts of the application to be shown. But please note that what I have done and what Mr. Decker has done is provided everyone with complete copies of everything that's been submitted. We have your applications, we have your documents, we have your plans. And they are well in advance for us to review those. So your presentation can, you know, it might be a little bit disjointed for you, but if you need to show something on the screen, it can be shared. Just let Mr. Decker know. Or if you can share it on your own, if you're comfortable with that, you can share it through your own system of sharing for us to see it as you're going through. After the applicant's presentation, I will take some time to allow anyone who wishes to speak in favor of that application to present what their comments at that time. If you are not unmuted at that time, we will unmute you. If you have muted yourself, you can unmute yourself and then begin speaking. And I will try to go in order for the people that I find raising their hand or that we know that are interested. After anyone who's spoken in favor of the application has been heard, I will invite anyone who has spoken in opposition, who wants to come up and speak. And again, we will unmute you, raise your hand. We have received some emails from people that are opposed to applications. And I recognize those on the record. It's information which has already been received at that. So after any opposition, whether it's, you know, live via this teleconference or whether it's something that's submitted, I will then allow the applicant to address those comments and oppositions. So if something has been submitted by email, don't worry. If you're, as an applicant, you will be given an opportunity to address those comments. This meeting is being taped and recorded and that's required by state law. So it's important that we be able to understand the tape. Only one person can speak at a time. Anyone who does speak, please give your name and address before you begin. Anytime you're speaking, even if there's an exchange back and forth, just so it's clear, please begin. An example of that, if, if there are questions of an applicant, after the applicant's done, I will, I'll ask the board member whether they have any questions. And if the board member has a question, I want the board member to state their name. For example, if I had a question, I'd say Kevin Coyne. This is my question for the applicant. And then when the applicant's responding to that, please, again, lead off by stating your name and indicate this is your response. That would just help us keep the record clear down the road.
May I interrupt and ask? The people on the, like, somebody on the conference call, if they can hear everything that's going on?
Yes. Carol can hear.
Okay, and you're on the conference line?
Yep.
Because I'm seeing.
I'm unable to get into the conference call.
Okay, I'm seeing people speak on, on the actual conference line, but I'm not hearing them on your conference. So I'm just concerned that for whatever reason, maybe they're not hearing the conference line.
John Lawson at Smedley Road. When I dialed in, it was locked and I could not get in. So I got in through the WebEx computer microphone.
That's the same for John Highland.
Same for the Maccos as well.
You can hear.
That's how we want it.
Okay. Hold on one second, I'm just going to get Jim real quick.
All right. Let's see.
Mr. Larson and Mr. Highland, can you hear me? Just nod your head.
Yes, I can hear you.
All right. I said it that way so you wouldn't have to unmute yourself.
All right, so. Number one is here, if we want to proceed with number one.
I'm not done bringing, taking, making the whole call.
Okay, sorry.
Is Emma line there in town hall?
Jim, I don't know where she went. She's on mute still.
I'm just calling into the line to see what they can hear. Who's talking?
The Emma line, Harrigan, who is our assistant planner.
With this technology.
Yes. All right, Kevin, just so you know, all the applicants are online.
Is Emma line going to call in and check?
Uh, you know, give me a second, let me go ask her. She put it on mute.
Please bear with us, ladies and gentlemen. We're trying to make sure everyone can hear.
Kevin, I mean, I guess what you want to do is allow them to enter the WebEx meeting technically. You can do that as long as, as long as Matt, you as the host.
Yep.
Mute all of those people who come in if you want to just solve it temporarily that way to keep the agenda moving. That's the only thing I can think unless Jim is able to get through to IT to work it out real quick.
I'm wondering if I should be sharing something as the host. So share my meeting window, share multimedia. Any options here?
Is that like in between? I took it out. Yeah. It's like one extreme or the other. They're having tech issues, they can't get this started.
Matt, can we continue or what?
Sorry, Kevin, yes, you can finish the call. I'm almost set getting everybody online here, so.
Where I was on the call is just to make sure you keep your comments on the point of that particular application, whether you're in favor or against that particular application. Keep your comments to the point. After the public hearing, we will reconvene to our executive session. You're allowed at that point to stay on, to listen in. In fact, it's encouraged to do so if you have the opportunity. We will, the board members that are voting will be discussing each matter that went forward today. At that time, you will not be able to make any comments. It's not time for your comments. This is time for our discussion about your particular matter. So you will be muted by the host at that point. And if an application for waiver is granted, it won't be valid until it's recorded in land records. The applicant must bring or send a check in the amount of $60 made payable to the Town of Fairfield and drop it off for recording of the notice. Any waiver involving construction, whether it's a new addition dwelling or alterations will require an as-built prior to issuance of his certificate of zoning compliance and a certificate of occupancy. If you cannot stay when we reconvene to our working session, you can always contact zoning office tomorrow or later to find out what happened on your particular matter. So now, as indicated, we do have two continued matters, as I previously stated, 8A, 8B, which is 231 Sterling Street Lot A and 231 Sterling Street Lot B. Those are not going forward at this time. As to our general docket, the first matter that we have is 101 Twin Brooks Lane, map 176, parcel 6. Addition of Kenneth A. and Suzanne Darmeyer, revariance of the zoning regulations, section 5.2.5, to increase the maximum lot coverage from 10% currently to 13.2%, proposing 13.5%. Permission to legitimize a construction error premises, double A zone. And I know we have Mr. Danmeyer available. Mr. Danmeyer, please unmute yourself and you can begin your application. But before you do, I just want to confirm that I have all board members on and listening. I see Jane, Terry, Sharon. Sharon, can you hear us?
Yes.
Okay. All right. All right, go ahead, Mr. Danmeyer.
All right, thank you. This is Ken Danmeyer. My wife and I, Suzanne, homeowners, 101 Twin Brooks Lane in Fairfield. Seeking to get to a positive closure on an open CO that we inherited. We purchased the residence back in 2015. The, when we purchased the residence, we found out four days before the previous homeowner couldn't get us a closed CO. Construction remodel they had done in 2009. They were able to get their approval from Sewer Department Conservation, but not from zoning because the maximum building lot coverage, as I think was just stated, showed that after a final build, they were over in lot coverage by 0.3%. So we were four days from closing on that house and our other ones. So we, of course, moved forward. We've been there for four years, love the house, plan to stay, but it's, we need to get it rectified. So it's, you know, it's all free and clear for the future down the road. It's also previously, I think, stated we're non-conforming lot. So the reason we are over in coverage, as we've stated, is on the original design, as I understand it from the zoning department, when the construction for the previous owners was, they didn't have any real steps coming out of the, coming off the, the addition down to the patio. So those were added during construction, I guess, by error. That's what produced that, that 0.3%, you know, coverage, over in coverage. The steps there are an integral part of the house. I sent Matt pictures, he can show them, but, you know, it kind of tie in the patio to the house. Ironically, it's one of the reasons we bought the house. Not huge steps, but very part, much part of the outdoor living space. Also, if you have the pictures, you can see that no adjoining neighbor can see the steps. There's a berm on one side, the house is on two sides of it. Our property butts up to the back of the Oden House. Local society property in the woods behind it. So been there since 2009 and never any issues, complaints, all in line with the size of the house and use in the neighborhood. We have gotten signatures, sign-offs from all our adjoining neighbors and those across the street. One had been there since the addition was put on and the steps were added in 2009 to begin with. No one has any issues whatsoever. No way, shape, or form does it bring down any value or detriment to any of this property. In fact, if you remove them from our house, it would take away our enjoyment and use of it and frankly, value because it's an integral part of it, in my opinion. There's also a French door that goes out to those steps. So if you remove the steps, then you also have an issue with a French door that goes nowhere. So realistically, not a, not, not something that would make much sense to do. So respectfully asking for permission to get a variance on that so we can close it out and make it all official.
Thank you, Mr. Danmeyer. Does the board have any questions? Again, I'll play teacher, I'll call on you. Jane, do you have any questions, Richard Danmeyer?
No, I don't.
Katie, do you have any questions?
No, I don't.
Sharon, do you have any questions?
No, I don't.
Terry, do you have any questions? You gotta unmute yourself, Terry.
What's that?
Do you have any questions?
No, I don't.
Okay. All right. Having no questions, is there anyone that wishes to speak in favor of the application? I see no hands raised on my side, participants. Mr. Decker, do you see any, any notification that someone wants to speak in favor?
I do not.
Okay. Is there anyone that wants to speak in opposition to the Danmeyer application? I see no hands.
Can you, can I just confirm on the conference call?
Emma line is confirming on conference call, but Matt, do you have anyone that has indicated that they wish to speak in opposition?
I do not, Kevin.
I will wait until we hear back from Emma line, as to the people that are calling in. And while I'm waiting on that, just a little request could, even for the board members or anyone, if you're not speaking, please mute because especially for the board members, when we're opening up our maps, it's causing some feedback. I will call on you so we don't miss anyone, but I want to try to eliminate as much feedback as, as possible.
Kevin, you're all set to go to the next item.
Thank you, Emma line. So Danmeyer application, public hearing is closed. We'll reconvene and discuss that in executive session. Number two, 635 Stillson Road, map 123, parcel 21. Addition of Carol and Glenn Maccno for a variance of the zoning regulations, section 5.2.4, to reduce the minimum required rear property line setback from 30 feet. Currently 24.7 feet, proposing 28.3 feet. Permission to construct a second floor dormer premises, A zone. I see that the Maccos are in on video as well. Please unmute yourself and begin your presentation. Unmute. Still muted.
Let me try it, let me try it.
Here we go.
Can you try?
Yep.
You're up at the top now, okay. There you go, you're all set now, go ahead.
Great. Carol and Glenn Maccno regarding 635 Stillson Road. Our dwelling, which was built in 1952 and is pre-existing non-conforming as it sits on the property today. Existing structure currently sits at 24.7 feet, proposing to 28.3 feet to the rear property line where the minimum today required setback is 30 feet. We're looking to build a, just a bathroom dormer for a second bathroom and we will not be increasing the footprint of the lot, of the building.
We're sharing some, is that you, Matt, or is that the Maccos?
That's me, I just wanted to pull up their, they have their signature card here as well.
Yes. Saw that in the package.
Sorry.
Okay. Anything further, Mr. Maccno?
Thank you.
Okay. Now let's see if the board has any questions. Katie, do you have any questions?
No, I don't.
Nod of the head, no, and a verbal no. Jane?
I have no questions.
Sharon?
No questions.
Terry, do you have any questions?
Terry has no questions.
All right. Having no questions, is there anyone that wishes to speak in favor of the application? I don't see any hands being raised. Matt, are you aware of any hands or anyone that wishes?
No, I am not.
Okay. So anyone who wishes to speak in opposition to this application? I have no hand raised. Matt, are you aware of anyone in opposition?
No, I'm not.
Okay. Hearing no opposition. Thank you, the matter is closed. As to the Maccos, we'll be taking that up to be discussing and voting later. The next item on our agenda is. The next item on our agenda is number three. 96 Medley Road, map 143 parcel 18. Petition of John and Jill Lawson for variance of the zoning regulations, section 5.2.4, to reduce a street line and some of two sideline setbacks from 30 feet and 25 feet, currently 29.6 feet and 35 feet, proposing 29.6 feet and 21.9 feet, and section 5.2.5 to increase a lot coverage from 20%, currently 18.9%, proposing 21.7%. Permission to construct one and two-story additions premises A zone. Mr. Lawson, you're unmuted already, you can begin your presentation.
Great, thanks for the opportunity. John and Jill Lawson, 96 Medley Road. We, we had a tree fall on our detached garage late last fall, and we'd like to attach the garage to the house. We've been living in a house since 2005. We, the house is from the 1920s, it needs an awful lot of work, and this has given us an opportunity to go ahead and say, we're going to stay here in Fairfield for the long term. We'd like to bump out our kitchen and put a master bedroom above it so that we can live comfortably here and enjoy our grandkids as our kids get older in the town of Fairfield. I respectfully request your permission to have this variance granted.
And Matt, did we have the petitions in that, on that one?
We do, yep, I got them, you want me to put them up?
Yes, if you could, please.
Let me see what I can get.
Only signature that I did not venture out to get was for Mrs. Barnum, who lives on the street behind us on Fairview Avenue. She's a woman in her late 80s and lives by herself, and I didn't want to knock on her door during this time.
Helen Barnum?
Correct, correct, Mr. and Mrs. Barnum, well, Mrs. Barnum now.
Can everybody see that page?
Great, thank you, Matt.
Okay, good.
Alright, now let's see if the board has any questions. Terry, do you have any questions?
Terry has no questions.
Okay, Jane, do you have any questions?
Jane has no questions.
Katie, do you have any questions?
Katie has no questions.
Sharon, do you have any questions?
Sharon has no questions.
Alright, having no questions, we'll move on. Is anyone who wishes to speak in favor of the Lawson application? I don't see any hand being raised. Matt, are you aware of anyone?
No.
Anyone who wishes to speak in opposition to the Lawson application? I don't see any hands being raised. Matt, are you aware of anyone?
No, I am not.
Okay, Lawson application, public hearing is closed. We'll take that up in our executive session. Number four, 661 Old Post Road, map 139 parcel 441. Petition of Episcopal Church CT for variance of the zoning regulations, section 5.2.4.3, to reduce the street line setback from 40 feet, proposing 21.1 feet. Permission to install standalone generator premises R3Z. Who is presenting?
Yes, this is Jonathan Hyland, Episcopal Church, 661 Old Post Road. We are seeking to install a residential 20 kilowatt natural gas generator to provide emergency power to two sump pumps in the nursery school basement area, and the furnace, and possibly refrigeration. But the key is the sump pumps. The proposed location is in the northwest corner of the building facing the Old Post Road, where there's access to our main gas lines and electrical panel. It's also the only location that we could effectively put it, keep it five feet, minimum of five feet, from the nearest window. Be able to screen it from public view, as it would be behind the nursery school sign, and be appropriately screened based on historic district approvals. The zoning requirement obviously is 40 feet from the property line. The best we can achieve is 21 feet. The critical aspect of our being able to have emergency power, particularly for the sump pumps, is that we have a, we had a major flood back in 2018, where our entire area, the town property and our nursery school was flooded. Those sump pumps failed, and I have a constant flow of water into those sumps, even today. So if we have a major storm that results in a power outage, we're likely to have another flood. And the remediation of that is tremendously expensive and disruptive. So that's why we are asking for the zoning variance to permit us to put this unit in place.
Thank you, Mr. Hyland. Does the board have any questions? Sharon, let's start with you.
Sharon has no questions.
Okay. Jane?
Of course I have questions. Property flood, when we had the hurricane several years ago, the property itself?
No, well, actually, the largest flood was the September 2018 storm that flooded both the town property and then overflowed into our nursery school area, or the back playground, and then down into the basement. That was the largest flood, to be honest with you. I wasn't thinking of 2015, but.
I'm just curious, if this generator is just going to be on the ground, is it in danger of being flooded, the generator itself?
I don't believe it, no, not really where, I think, because it's placed at the level of the Old Post Road, at the high point of the front of the property. Whereas the nursery school, our driveway has a fairly steep grade going downhill, and that's where we get the groundwater from any storms that come from the properties that are higher above us.
I'm just curious, historically, Matt, do you have any recollection of any floods coming up far?
He's correct, I mean, the back portion of that lot does flood. They are lower than Town Hall, the backyard of St. Paul's. So during Sandy, we had water that came up to the back parking lot of Town Hall, but there was not a significant amount of rain during that storm, so it was just Long Island sound that overflowed. When it rained heavy, that back section behind or in front of Town Hall driveway flooded a lot.
So is this, in your opinion, Matt, do you think this generator is potentially?
The generator is high enough where it's out of the area. And the front of the property is probably, I would say, four to three and a half feet higher than the back portion, where the nursery school is located.
Okay, thank you. That's it, no more questions from me.
Katie, did I already ask you if you had questions or not?
I have no questions.
I know I asked Sharon. Terry, do you have questions?
Terry has no questions.
I don't have any questions. Anyone who wishes to speak in favor of the application? I see no hand raised on the participant list. Matt, are you aware?
I do not see any.
Anyone in opposition to the application? See no hand raised on the participant list. Matt, are you aware of any opposition?
I don't see any.
Thank you, this matter is closed. We'll take that up in voting. Discussion. Next item is number five, 1810 Fairfield Beach Road, map 234 parcel 137. Petition of Ken Elizabeth Davy for variance of the zoning regulations, section 11.10, to increase lot coverage from 20%, currently 19.78%, proposing 22.11%. Permission to construct a rear screened porch premises BD zone. Attorney Russo, I should believe you're presenting on this?
Yes, Chair, thank you. Thank you, Chair, thank you, members of the board, for getting this together. Matt, Emmeline, Josephine, really appreciate you letting us be able to move these applications forward. Chris Russo with Russo and Rizio LLC, offices at 10 Sasco Hill Road in Fairfield, here in place of Attorney Ray Rizio, who apologizes for not being able to attend the hearing on behalf of Ken Davy, the property owner of 1810 Fairfield Beach Road. First off, I just want to apologize for the attire I'm wearing. I broke my arm, and so I, I'm not, not in a suit like I normally would be, so apologize for that. But so was stated, we are here for a variance to increase our coverage only by 156 square feet. It's a pretty modest request to construct a rear screened-in porch onto the back of the existing dwelling at the site, which has tremendous support of the neighbors. I submitted petitions to Matt, I can pull those up later. But before getting into the details of this application, you have three applications on the agenda in a row for Fairfield Beach Road, and I know the ZBA sees a lot of Fairfield Beach Road applications. And the ZBA is really the board to handle development on Fairfield Beach Road, especially those properties along Pine Creek. And, and one of the reasons is that each property is so unique, these Pine Creek properties on Fairfield Beach Road. My parents have lived there my whole life, and there's a tremendous difference between their lot, which is closer to the marsh, that's a long lot, that is basically on the same plane with the creek. And some of the properties further down on Fairfield Beach Road, when you start to approach the cul-de-sac at the end, which are, some of them are very shallow, including this property and the next application that I'm doing. And in the height and topography in relation to the creek can be so different as you go along these Pine Creek properties on Fairfield Beach Road. So it's really impossible to craft a regulation that could uniformly handle properties that are so vastly different. And I think my client's property on this application is one of them. I'll try to share my screen to show the site plan. Let's see.
I could do that if you wish.
I think I got it, did I get it? I think I got it.
Got it, yep, you got it.
Okay, so here's my client's property. And if you look at the site plan, you can see the hashed area at the rear of the dwelling, where my client proposes this, this deck off of the back of his first living floor. The addition will obviously be built to FEMA standards. You can see on the elevations, you know, how that looks. But on the site plan, the first thing I would note is how undersized this lot is for the BD zone. Minimum lot area is 9,375 square feet in the BD zone. My client's property is essentially 6,700 square feet. And, and as you, you know, as you likely know, as you go down Fairfield Beach Road and you get towards the cul-de-sac, a lot of these Pine Creek side properties start to go down in lot area, including my clients. And the other thing that you'll see on this site plan is Pine Creek will make these big cuts into some of these properties. And, you know, my parents' lot, it's just a regular kind of straight rear property line, but there's a few properties along Pine Creek where you will see these sharp angled rear property lines because of the way Pine Creek cuts into them, which, you know, can make, can make it really difficult. You know, if you look at this property and its backyard, at this slant, slant that it has, and, you know, really hampers having kind of a normal functioning backyard. This building actually complies with the setbacks for the BD zone. So, including the proposed screened-in porch. There's, there's no variance request for setbacks. But so, but what ends up happening is this property has to be, the dwelling has to be set back 25 feet from the center line, and it pushes the dwelling back, and with this steep cut into the property, there's essentially no backyard. It's divided into, into different sections. And it's one of the reasons why, not really being able to utilize the backyard is one of the reasons why my client is looking to put in this deck so that they can enjoy Pine Creek. You know, and obviously the fact that it's raised off of the ground as well. It just makes it more natural for the deck to be off the first living floor back there. The other thing is, and I took some pictures, so I'm just going to pull up these pictures. See if I can share these. Wait, no, this is the wrong, it's the wrong application. Here we go, right application. So just want to run through a few pictures. The first one, I just wanted to show where the neighboring house, one of the concerns for, on the Pine Creek side, that on potential impacts of neighbors is, particularly for neighbors in the east, if you put something on the rear, if it will block the view of the creek. A lot of people that live on Pine Creek like to be able to look down the creek, down the west, and they don't want that obstructed. I provided this picture to show that I'm standing actually at the rear of the dwelling, and you can see, this is the property to the east. Everybody sees that, right? Can everybody see this picture? Yeah, okay, so that's the front of our neighbor to the east. So this, this small addition, which really doesn't shut out that much from the rear of the dwelling, will have no impact on their views to down, down Pine Creek. The next picture here, and then you can see, you can see there that, that's the house to the, to the east, and it sticks far beyond our client's dwelling. This is where the proposed addition would go. So there's already a little bit, you know, a cut right here, a little deck here, so it's just expanding it out. Again, only 156 square feet, it's not much. Basically, where you see the, the slate here is where this will extend out to. And you can see, there's just not much of a backyard there before a row of stones, and then a steep decline into the creek. And so this is what I think is one of the other unique features of this property. You know, there's some properties on Pine Creek where your lot will just go ungrade out into Pine Creek. There's others that end in bulkheads that go straight down. And my client's property has this row of stones, and then it's a pretty steep decline, and it's got all this vegetation in there that they can't touch. So there's, there's, there's not really, even though they have some room in the rear setback, there's not much they can do here because of the way Pine Creek comes in, cuts their property, and just, you know, the, the topography that exists at the rear of the site. This is a look at the, from the side, showing where it would go. So you can see here kind of how far the addition would extend out, because it essentially would go where these, where these, where the slate walkway is, and extend out there. So, let me skip that one there. So here's a view just from the, from the dock, so you can, you can really see where it, where the porch will go. And this is just a shot down the creek from the dock. You can see the, the building next to us, we won't impact that building at all. There will be really no impact on the neighbors here. And this is the, the front of the house, is a very, very nice house. And the screened-in porch will essentially, will just match the style of what's there existing. So if I go back here. Probably, sorry, I'm going to stop sharing, hold on one second.
Attorney Russo, if you have the petitions present that you can share for us, or no?
Yes. Hold on one second, I'll pull that up. Sorry, Chair, one second while I just, I just pull this up. Okay, so here's one page of the um of the supporters. You can see uh, th- this is the neighbor to the east, eighteen hundred Fairfield Beach Road, in support of the application. Um, I have a couple other pages of petitions. There's another page of uh neighbors in support. And one more. That's uh, that's the seventeen ninety Fairfield Beach Road is the neighbor beyond eighteen hundred Fairfield Beach Road uh to the east. Uh, and then another uh Fairfield Beach neighbor in support of the application. I also have an email um from Patty Zeki who's across the street. She did not sign a petition, but she, I don't know if you could see this, but she, she's sent in an email. Um, she's saying, "I'm very much in favor of adding on to your deck and screening in." And, and um, we just didn't receive a signed petition from her. We received an email support. So um, we have to support neighbors. My client went to some, some, he went in the, when we originally submitted, it was in the winter, and some uh homeowners weren't home. Uh, you know, as happens down at the beach during the winter. Um, and unfortunately, my client went to England for work and got stuck in England because of the virus, so he is not back. Um, uh, but he, he did get his signatures from a lot of the neighbors. So, um, I, 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 I think, you know, a few things, the, the topography, uh, the shape of the, of the site, um, and just how unique some of these properties are in Pine Creek justify a variance, uh, which is a, a really modest request uh to put on a screened-in porch, hundred fifty-six square feet of extra coverage. Um, and, and you know, there's, there's, there's porches and decks uh all along Pine Creek on, on this Fairfield Beach roadside. Um, uh, so, and, and there's no negative impact on neighbors. Um, and uh, and, and that's essentially it. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Attorney Russo. Um, or to have any questions for Attorney Russo, uh, start with Sharon. Sharon, do you have any questions?
Sharon has no questions.
Terry, do you have questions?
Terry has no question.
Jane, do you have any questions?
Yes, I do. Um, hi. You refer to the addition both as a deck and then a screen porch, but when you look at the actual drawing, it's a, it's a, it's a uh screen porch with a roof. And, right, so um, because it's an open, you know, an outdoor space, it's not part of any FAR calculation. Is that correct?
I believe because, and Matt would probably, Matt's gonna know better than me. I'll defer to Matt.
Um, there's no FAR in the Beach District. It's uh lock coverage plus a second floor.
So if someday they wanted to enclose the screen and porch and make it conditioned space, they wouldn't have to get a second variance?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Because technically the screen is considered enclosed. That's how I um interpret a um, an application. Open, an open porch, if there were an open screen porch and there were setback issues involved, then if they wanted to enclose it, they would need to come back for a variance or setbacks, but since setbacks aren't even uh a consideration here, the enclosure would be fine, and there is no additional coverage um added to that because it's already calculated.
Okay, I was just looking at the grid on the um survey. Where the existing floor area and the proposed floor area is the same number.
Yeah, well, there shouldn't be a floor area in the Beach District. The Beach District is lock coverage and uh they're only allowed two stories, so you're allowed lock coverage, and then you're allowed to put a second floor on top of the existing footprint of the house.
Okay, thank you. That clears it up.
Katie, do you have a question?
I have no questions.
Did I cover everyone? I think I did. Okay. Uh, anyone wish to speak in favor of the application? I don't see anyone hand raised. Matt, do you, are aware of anyone?
I do not see anyone either.
Is anyone uh opposed to the application? I don't see any hands raised on the participant list. Matt, are you aware of anyone?
No, I'm not.
Okay, Attorney Russo, that application is closed. Uh, eighteen ten Fairfield Beach Road. The next one, number six, eighteen ninety-six Fairfield Beach Road, map two-three-four parcel fourteen uh slash one four two, petition of Fairfield Pine Creek LLC for a variance of the zoning regulations section eleven point fourteen to reduce the setback from Pine Creek from ten feet, proposing point four feet permission to construct a four-foot fence premises BD zone. Attorney Russo, this is you again.
Thank you, Chair. Chris Russo with Russo and Rizio LLC, offices at ten Sasko Hill uh in Fairfield. On behalf of the uh property owner, um, uh, asking again for, I, I, what I think is another modest variance uh for a, a a very reasonable fence um for, for really for safety reasons. Um, you know, just kind of going off of, uh, you know, and I had mentioned this in the, in the previous application. This is one of those Pine Creek properties that's extremely shallow. Um, at one point, it's forty-six feet uh from the edge of Pine Creek to actually the center line of Fairfield Beach Road, not to the edge of the property, the center line. Um, and uh, and I can actually speak on personal experience because I, because I grew up here. Uh, it, it's, it's one of the closest areas where you can walk on the street um uh in, in, in close to being to Pine Creek. Maybe besides the cul-de-sac, it's probably the closest you can get. And I, I'd admit to trespassing on this property multiple times to get a quick look uh down, down Pine Creek. Um, and, and my client's facing that problem. Um, uh, because uh, you know, his family is concerned about um, he had constructed a bulkhead. Uh, and you might remember this from his previous application when he, when, when they uh built the building that's there right now. Um, that part of that was that he was, uh, application was that he was planning on improving the bulkhead, which he did. It was a tremendous um improvement. And um, but the nature of this, this site is that there's, there's essentially no backyard. The building is right up against the uh bulkhead. Um, and uh, there's a, there's two parking areas on each side of it, and there's a significant drop-off from the top of the bulkhead down to the, the, to the creek bed. So um, and, and when it's low tide, i- it's, it's not really the water that's directly below um from where the bulkhead is. It's, it's, it's the bed with exposed rock. Um, so um, because of this kind of safety concern, um, he is proposing this fence. Um, and uh, I, I think it's really, I'm gonna pull up the site plan so I can show the fence. Um, one second. Let's see here. Okay. I really think it's a, the perfect type of fence um to to have uh along Pine Creek, because as you can see, this is, this is an inset picture in the plan that you have. Um, you know, I, I know the, the purpose of the ra- the, the regulation, you know, regarding fences along Pine Creek is um is really to make sure that the public, which, you know, a lot of people walk down Fairfield Beach Road, can enjoy um Pine Creek. And um, you know, this fence, which, you know, will help protect anybody, uh, you know, particularly my client's family from, you know, falling down this bulkhead. Um, i- it's, it, it achieves a safety goal, but it also, I think, achieves the, the goal of making sure that the public can still see Pine Creek. Um, it, it's very minimal. Um, it's got uh, you know, these, these wood posts, but then this like black, this uh black wire that runs in between the posts that really doesn't um uh obstruct uh the view. So uh, I just want to show some pictures that I took, just to show them. Let's see. Can you see those pictures? Are those, are those pictures? Uh, can you see those or no?
Not yet.
Oh. Well, let me see where the issue is. Maybe if I share them again. Maybe right there. So here's a picture, just so you can see. This, I tried to get it at dead-low tide. This was right before dead-low tide. Could you see, can you see that picture now?
I think it's on the lower part of your screen. You need to move it up uh upper part of your screen, because it's not showing, I think, for people. It's not showing for me.
Not sure. Maybe, I think I, Matt, do you have these pictures?
It's on now. It was on just.
Hold on, I had it. All right, let's see here. Hold on.
I can, uh, I, I uploaded them. I can, I can load it if you want.
There you go. Attorney Russo, that to be shown.
Okay, so, so you can see here, there's um this, this was, I, I, I took this picture right before uh dead-low tide, and you can see that, you know, it's a significant drop-off from the new bulkhead that he created. Um, uh, down, from the top of it down to the bottom. Um, and you can see the rocks down there, so that, that is what he's looking to um protect. Um, here's another picture, if you see that um uh showing d- down to the creek bed near low tide. And so the fence would start, um, if you could see this picture, um, along the rear here, uh, on the bulkhead, and it would run from here where you see the uh uh screened-in, well, not the, the deck that has the, the fencing around it, from there out to his property line. And uh, just to protect uh his family, let's see here. This just shows how close the the bulkhead is to the road. I mean, here are the pavers to get on to the property, and then uh you could see the bulkhead right there, and you can actually see that, that portion of the fence that you can see in that picture um that is going to be extended for the uh rest of the uh back property line. Uh, this is part of the, the dock approval, but that's the fence, and it's just going to be um extended. And another picture. This is the front um uh, building that really came out great and looks, looks great. That this commission approved. I took this bigger picture ju- again, just to show the depth. I mean, here's the center line of the road. You can see, I mean, it's essentially a little more than one car's length to get from the road to the top of the bulkhead. And it might be it. And actually, this is uh, this, this board, I, I previously pr- presented on an application at the end of a, uh, at the end of the cul-de-sac on Fairfield Beach Road, and this board had approved um that fence that is uh uh along their bulkhead. Uh, again, safety reasons, there's a pretty significant drop-off there. Um, and they approved this fence, and I actually think that uh, that the fence that uh my client's proposing in this application is much more minimal than that. Um, uh, doesn't nearly obstruct the view of the public, uh, as this fence does. And um, and that's really it. We, we think it's a, it, it's a, it's a reasonable safety concern with the drop from the top of the bulkhead down to the creek. I- it's a very minimal fence. It will not obstruct the view um of uh any Fairfield resident that's walking down Fairfield Beach Road and wants to see the creek. Um, I just think it's a reasonable um uh safety measure uh on the site, and respectfully request your approval of the application.
Thank you, Attorney Russo, and unshared that screen. Thank you. Uh, Attorney Russo, I just want to make sure, just for the record, Matt, for the eighteen ten Fairfield Beach Road, as well as this application, are the photographs part of the record?
Yes.
Okay, just want to make sure that they are, are marked as part of the record. Okay, um, now open up for questions. Terry, do you have any questions?
Terry has no questions.
Jane, do you have questions?
Jane has no questions.
Katie, do you have questions?
He has no question.
Sharon has no questions.
Okay. Attorney Russo, you're not out of, off the hook. I have a question.
Okay.
Uh, Chair, I remember the other application that you just referred to in your presentation, and I seem to remember that there was a, a condition uh that was proposed or accepted by the applicant in that to uh, that the application could be granted, conditioned upon that the type and style of the fences proposed in the application would be, that's what it would, the uh fencing would be restricted to. Is the applicant agreeable to such a condition?
That the, that the type of fencing proposed um and shown on the site plan submitted would be the type of fence installed, yes.
Because it is an inset in your site, in your plan, which is beneficial, I think, is a good idea to put that in as an inset.
Yeah, absolutely, and you can see, and also, there's, there's a, a, um, there's a detail about the railing location that shows how it will be constructed um uh within, between the pile and the uh, what they call the ribbon wall of the, of the bulkhead. Um, so it would be per plans, essentially.
All right, very good. Thank you. Uh, and uh, does anyone wish to speak in favor of the application? Scrolling, I don't see anything. Matt, do you have any, anyone?
I do not see anyone.
Does anyone uh wish to speak in opposition to this application? Do not see anything. Matt, do you have anything in opposition?
Neither.
Okay, no. Uh, the hearing on eighteen ninety-six Fairfield Beach Road is now closed. We'll take this matter up in our working session to discuss and vote on. Next item is number seven. Uh, it's on the call. It's sixteen zero nine and sixteen two-three Fairfield Beach Road map. Two-three-four parcel two-two.
I'm silent again. I lost, I lost the phone audio.
We'll be joined into the conference.
Hold on. Sorry, go ahead, Kevin.
What was that? Okay, I'll, I'll restart it. Number seven, sixteen zero nine and sixteen twenty-three Fairfield Beach Road, map two-three-four parcel two-two, petition of Gregory Sargent to reverse and modify a decision of zoning administrator regarding the approval of a zoning compliance application premises BD zone. Mr. Sargent?
Matt, I still can't, I still can't hear on the conference line.
You can't hear?
It was, it was on, and then it just dropped out, so I'm just asking Matt to double-check for one second.
Yeah, uh. I didn't touch anything. I'm still on conference here. Can you hear me?
Uh, hello?
Hello?
Hi, um, I just wound up having to call back into this line because I've been on for an hour. So anybody else has probably been cut off after an hour as well.
I can't tell who that is, so please state your name, because we don't know who it is.
Oh, I'm sorry. This is Matthew Benjamin, two seventeen Sterling Street. Um, I literally just was cut off after being on um for an hour. Uh, my neighbor, her brother is calling in from Florida to represent her, to, to represent her, because she's.
Kevin, I'm gonna interject. Uh, uh, I just, um, you're on Sterling Street?
Yes, I am.
Yeah, that matter was continued until June eleventh.
Okay, why weren't we informed?
Uh, it was just continued today.
Yeah, I, well, that's why.
I announced it at the beginning of our call as well. This is Chairman Kevin Coyne. I did announce it twice at the beginning of our call. Sorry you weren't on the call at that time.
Well, yeah, because we weren't, uh, we, we could not get in with audio. We were also informed that the meeting had been paused until we were in on audio.
Right, we did not realize when we started the original call, uh Chairman Coyne started the original call, we did not realize the call-ins could not hear us. Uh, it, our apologies for not reiterating what was stated first. Uh, it, our apologies for not reiterating what was stated first.
Okay, no problem. Um, I would also like to know though, if you don't mind, uh, why we're not allowed to uh be in on WebEx so that we can view what is, what you guys are seeing as well.
They're available on our website, actually. We uploaded everything onto the town's website to, to view and it's exactly what our commissioners have.
I, 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 oh, really? Because I was trying to find um information to get onto WebEx so I could watch you guys as well.
Right. That is not a feature uh that is available to um right now the public, um, which is why we have the conference call-in line. Um, we have our applicants as well as our commissioners available through the WebEx. And then we have a call-in line with instructions to view the applications on our website.
Okay, I mean, I understand the, the, the application. I, I've been in contact with the builder. I, I live right next door to the property that was uh erased. Um, so, um, my understanding, you said June eleventh or something to that effect?
June eleventh, two o'clock.
Eleven, two o'clock. And will that be um at the town? Uh, be uh what we're doing now or?
Same thing we're doing now.
Okay, will we have an opportunity to go live?
Absolutely.
Okay, I don't mean, I don't mean audio. I mean audio and visual.
It'll be, it'll be the same process as it is right now.
It is, okay. Alright, I guess.
Okay. Now, my contact, um, my name's Matt Decker. I'm the zoning enforcement officer. My contact information's on the website. If you have any questions, please email me.
I will.
Okay.
Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you. Sorry, Kevin, go ahead.
Alright, uh, Mr. Sergeant? Are you ready? Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. I am Greg Sargent. I'm the owner of sixteen oh nine Fairfield Beach Road. And I am asking you today to. Uh, overturn the zoning compliance of my neighbors the immediate west at sixteen twenty-three Fairfield Beach Road. Some of you may be crawling, seeing me uh in front of you about six months ago, I stood before the. Board for a variance myself, eleven point one point one. And my neighbors, the same subject property. Worked against my variance application. And at the time, my best defense, I thought, was that the zoning department said it was zoning compliant. Therefore, it is zoning compliant. So you may be wondering what I'm using our uh zoning department back six months ago in my defense. And now I'm attacking the same zoning department against department on their uh construction. And it's very simple, very simple. What I showed you six months ago to get my variance, I'm going to build. And what they showed your predecessor board nine years ago to get their two variances, they are not building. So I think we need to relook and do a compare and contrast of how they got their variances. Nine years ago and what they're trying to build now. This is meant as no disrespect to our zoning department. I didn't do a fine job. And then they run through a lot of material uh and applications every year. And I only look at one. I looked at my one neighbor's nine years ago. I looked again to now. And so I had a little better information. I went back through a nine-year-old file to see the discrepancies. Okay? So, um, I passed along to Mr. Decker uh thirteen PDF files. And I numbered them so that we can just go right in order. One through thirteen. I'll try and move this through this as efficiently as possible. I will not waste your time. Okay? PDF.
Yeah, bring them up now. Thanks, Matt.
Yep.
PDF number one, please, Matt.
Uh, just give me one quick second.
Yeah, take your time.
Alright.
Before you start, Mrs. Sergeant, let me just make sure for the commissioner, for the rest of the board, if you want to see Mr. Sergeant. Uh, you, there's arrows up at the top. If he's, if his picture is not appearing, you can scroll on those arrows to get to him. And then his box will highlight when he's speaking, just so. You know, it's probably easier to follow when you see a face up at the top. Go ahead, Mr. Sergeant.
Um, that, Matt, is the scheduling, Schedule A of my application to the. We can move along from that unless we want to review that again. There we go, right there. Stop. Okay, so that's my name, my signature, my address and dated July of twenty eleven. And that's just stating that I saw their building plans. They showed them to me. I signed off on it. And in fact, I spoke on their behalf at their Z B A hearing nine years ago. Uh, next PDF, please, Matt.
Did you want to look at the Schedule B from uh the original one, Greg?
Matt, you're going too fast. Slide back up to the front page of the application to the zoning board appeals. Little more. Stop right there. Good. This is the cover page of their application nine years ago to their two variances. You see their name, their address right there. I'll just highlight number one that says. They're going, variances, section eleven seven, an increase in permitted height. And section eleven point one point one. Two dwellings on one lot. They have a property very similar to mine that is older beach style with two dwellings. And we're both trying to go through the modifications to bring our properties up to zoning and FEMA code. If you scroll down that PDF just a touch. It says, you know, basically print your. Proposal and it says, see attached Schedule A. Unfortunately, I do not have that, nor does the. Town hall. I think it's been lost over the past nine years. But certainly we can infer what they're doing. They had three structures. Two residences and one garage. They wanted to tear them all down. They have since built one structure and built their garage. The only one remaining is the larger beach house that's left to be built. So we can flip to that. PDF number three, please, Matt. Right there up top. Perfect. Uh, the top part is where you write out your hardship. And the hardship says, see attached Schedule B, which will scroll right along. Next PDF four, please, Matt. Schedule B right there. Their names, their address. And I'll highlight, I'll start reading from the second paragraph to put it into the record. Starting with, and I quote. The property at present contains an existing two-story house and one-story guest house on the parcel of property. Fronting on Long Island Sound and a garage on the parcel of property across Fairfield Beach Road, fronting on Pine Creek. The intent of the applicants is demolish all three existing buildings and construct a two-story new home. A separate one-story storage building on the parcel of property abutting Long Island Sound. And to construct a new guest house with garage below on the parcel abutting Pine Creek. PDF five, please. To that end, the applicants are requesting a variance of section eleven point seven to permit an increase in height from thirty to thirty-one point three three feet. And a variance of section eleven point one one. To permit the construction of two homes on one lot. The height variance request is due to the nature of the proposed construction and the proposed roof line. The new home will be a contemporary design, which will incorporate a flat roof as shown on sheet Z zero zero five. Of the architectural plans, the area which exceeds the height limitation of thirty feet is very limited in size. The area of exceedance is highlighted in orange on sheet Z two zero zero five. This area of exceedance is actually a room at the top of the stairs. Utilized to access the proposed rooftop deck. Sheet Z zero zero five also depicts the permitted height as per the definition of height in the zoning regulations. Which would be permitted if a pitched roof were to be constructed. The mass and actual height of the pitched roof is considerably greater than the roof designed proposed here. The applicants also request permission to construct two new dwellings to replace the two dwellings presently located on the property. For discussions with the zoning department staff, there are two regulatory options to reach this end. Either an application can be made as here. Eleven point four of the regulations can be utilized and. PDF six, please. Application can be made to the town plan and zoning commission. In the interest of time and administrative efficiency, application is being made to this board. The most important factor to consider is that section eleven point four of the beach district regulations. Explicitly permits the construction of one or more dwellings in replacement of the same number of existing dwelling units. Provided all other requirements, requirements are satisfied. All requirements are satisfied, including specifically the rest coverage restrictions. This request permits to replace and fill the dwellings with two new homes. Okay, so that was their application of eleven years ago. And all I want to do now. Look at their various architectural plans and A twos from that timeframe. This is PDF seven, if you're keeping track electronically. The top part of this picture you'll see is in fact a flat roof. And there are three large arrows on top of the roof. And I'll point to the middle arrow and the words next to it say, which say. Area of proposed flat roof exceeding height limit, one feet, four inches. And then the line and arrow right beneath that, it says, height limit thirty feet above grade. So the. Of the beach district, and if you want to look at me in a picture right now. It's determined typically by a roof structure like this, a gabled roof, a pitched roof. And the height is measured from. The midpoint of the top of the ridge to the underside of the eaves. So this midpoint is where the zoning department measures down to the grade. Okay? If you go to a flat roof structure, there is no midpoint. So there's three things that I want to highlight from their application nine years ago. One is, in fact, it is a flat roof structure. It's not a pitched roof structure. That is part of their hardship. The area that is in exceeding the height limit of the zoning code. Is very small in space, excuse me, very limited in size. And it's essentially a room at the top of the stairs. Used to access the rooftop deck. And lastly, which is not at all in this application, but is certainly relevant in a court of law, is that. The variance, excuse me, the hardship that they claim is one they created. They created a flat uh roofed structure, which they claim is their variance. And I don't want to go down the path of. Judicating law here. I'm not an attorney. But. You cannot create your hardship to then claim to ask for a variance. Let's move along to the pictures. PDF seven is shown there. The top area of the top photo of the main house actually is very small in scope. Sorry, Matt, one more there. Back one, one slide. PDF seven.
Back one? Sorry.
Right there, yep, good. And it is, if you look at this picture, I think quite modest in size. I'd put a rule to this and estimate to be about eight feet wide. If you look at the bottom picture, the same PDF right there, that's a top-down view. And that area, um, that's darkened right in the middle, is approximately eight by sixteen or a hundred and twenty-eight square feet. And make note of the actual configuration of the structure. It's essentially three rectangles. You have a larger rectangle facing towards the beach, a smaller one in the mid, in the middle, and then a large one back towards the road. Okay, so this is consistent, as is the next PDF, PDF eight. This is just the building plans now. We went from more of a zoning um elevation to building, and this is just the look of the structure they're trying to build. North and south elevations. And again, it is flat-roofed and is very modest in scope relative to the size of the building. We can go on to PDF nine, please, Mr. Decker. This is the cam landscape plan. And I only bring this up because I think it's easier to highlight one particular feature of their development. And that is, if you look at the proposed residence towards the beach. To the south, that is towards the sound, you'll see a substantial proposed deck. And that deck by my measuring is a ten by forty deck or approximately four hundred square feet. Alright, let's keep that in the back of our minds. One more PDF, please, Mr. Decker. This is the A two they submitted with this application for variances. This is PDF ten. And again, you'll see the three rectangles, configuration of the home. Proposed deck in front. And I'll make note on the top right corner, when you look at the grid, where it says beach district. The third. Line from bottom says maximum building lot coverage as a percentage of lot area. In the beach district, we are allowed twenty percent or less. And this application is consistent at nineteen point nine percent. Okay, so that is what they showed us nine years ago to get their variances. And now what we'll do is contrast to what they're building now. And I mean, building now is in there, building it right now next to me. This was submitted several months ago, um. And the zoning compliance was established something in like March, I'm going to say, February or March. The first thing that stands out to me is this in this picture is, it's no longer a flat roof structure. It's got a pitch to it. So the flat roof structure, which was the hardship they claimed to grab their variance, variances. It's no longer there. And if you look at the midpoint of that angled roof, that pitched roof, you see a dashed line. And it says roof midpoint. So they are using the roof midpoint to calculate the height of their structure. And that intersects with a circle and a perpendicular line down. As you slide down towards the ground, you see a circle that says. Thirty feet, eleven and one quarter inches. And underneath that, it says, the maximum allowable is thirty-one feet, four inches. See section note one. And if you keep sliding to the right down towards the section note, it's got a squiggly circle around it. I'll read this into the record. It says, height variance filed on May thirteenth, twenty eleven. Was granted by zoning board appeals July seven, twenty eleven. Variance allowed an increase in the height of one point three three feet. Okay, so we got a problem here, folks. The problem is, they got a variance. By having a flat roof structure, that they have no midpoint of their roof, that the roof is flat. Now they're designing it pitched. They're taking the midpoint, which is higher, and they're adding. The height variance on top of that. They're trying to double dip. Can't do that. Now, if you look on top of the. The roof there, um. Well, I'm sorry, pardon me. If you look to the far left of that. That PDF eleven, you'll see I wrote it in pencil, height, zoning variance. I drew a line straight across the structure. Now that is my calculation. I may be off by some amount. But it is certainly somewhere in the neighborhood because we know that it's above thirty feet. It says right there on the side of the picture. And of that area that I believe to be above current height code, I put the dimensions. And that's um width is approximately twenty-three feet, nine inches. Okay, twenty-three feet, nine inches. Now if we slide to the next PDF twelve. This is a building plan. You'll see the same sloped roof up top. And look down below. This is the opposite elevation. This comes from the road. This is the north side. So now we see the length of the structure up top that's using the height variance. It's nineteen feet long. So what was an area which was a small room utilized to access the rooftop deck. Has turned into an almost twenty-four feet by nineteen foot floor, approximately four hundred and fifty square feet. You can't do that either. You can't do that because their height is in, is using a variance. It's non-conforming. You can't take your non-conforming area of your structure and expand it just because you. You can't take your non-conforming area of your structure and expand it just because you want to. If they want to expand their non-conformance, they need to come back before the ZBA and ask for an expansion of the non-conformance. Okay. Last PDF, number 13. This is their current A2 as submitted to get the zoning compliance of their newest plans. One more, please, Matt.
Hold on, Greg. Hold on, it's not on here. I've only got 14 items.
Should be 14 then. Put up 14.
That was 14, the house.
Right there.
This is the only survey that I've got. Just make sure.
If I shoot it through to you now, will you be able to put it up?
Uh, do you have it on yours? Because it didn't, for some reason, the current one did not make the webpage. I've got it on my, hold on.
I sent you three emails, one to five, six to 10, and 11, 12, 13.
I know. I got them all. I just, for some reason, one of them didn't make it up.
Okay.
Hold on. No, I'm gonna have to, I'm gonna have to email it to everybody, Greg.
It's fine by me, if that's okay by them.
I don't know. What do you think, Kevin?
Let me just check with the rest of the board. Can everyone access their email at the same time? I was keeping this screen open.
I think so.
Sure.
Get it on my iPhone.
I have my iPhone to read though.
I have no problem. I have another screen here.
Yeah, I'm fine. I have an extra screen right in front of me available, so.
All right, folks, give me one second to get it to you. And, yeah, Mr. Green, are you available?
Joel?
Yes.
All right, I'm gonna send it to you as well. My computer will catch up to me here. One second. Joel, I'm sorry, I don't have your email. Could you give it to me, please?
It could go Jay.
Sorry?
J G R E E N at G G L A W.
All right, you're breaking up. Hold on.
Jay Green at G G L A W dot com.
Got it. Sorry, I got it right here. Got it.
Oh, dot net? I'm sorry, Joel. Dot net.
Nope, I got it, yep. All right, so anybody outside the commissioners and Joel should get it.
If anyone else needs a copy of that for review, please raise your hand or let us know by unmuting and verbally advise.
All right, I'm gonna send it. All right, folks, sorry about that. You got the survey that you should have in your email.
Not yet.
It's a survey file. It'll take a little bit to come through. I just asked the board members to advise when you receive it. Attorney Green, please advise when you receive it.
Terry Keegan has it.
Joel Green has received it.
Sharon Strelzer has received it.
Jane Gitlin has received it.
I have not gotten it, but I got Joel Attorney Green's email indicating receive. Attorney Green, could I ask you a favor to just forward the email that you have? I seem to get your email faster than the towns.
Sorry about that, Kevin.
It's probably caught up on our firewall coming from.
Katie, did you get it yet?
Yes, I got it. Katie, got it?
Katie, got it.
Mr. Decker, while we're waiting, if you could slide up to go to, I think it would be PDF 11 by your count, would be their old A2.
Yeah, the old A2, yep, got it right here. Uh, no, that's the new one. Sorry, hold on. Let me see. Yeah, that was it.
I have it as well. Kevin Korn has it. Thank you, Attorney Green.
That's their CAM landscape plan. One more towards the end, so one more after that, I believe.
There you go.
That's it, good.
That one there.
Mr. Sergeant, go ahead. Everyone has it now.
Oh, great, thank you. So just a quick synopsis. I made two points, which was they went from a flat roof to a pitched roof. That was the, I think, the first violation and increased the height of the building. The second one was they had a small footprint allowed to have, to be up in the, above the height regulation. Now it's very large footprint. That's a second violation. And here's what I think is a third. And you can look at the email just sent to you, which is their current A2 for their new structure, and just do a compare and contrast to what the one we're seeing right on the screen, which was the original A2. Being three rectangles in size and a smaller footprint to a larger footprint and one rectangle here. They increased the resonance. But you might recall that what I originally showed in the A2 was that they had 19.9%. So one could easily ask the question, well, how could you increase the home if they're at 19.9% to start with? It's because they ripped off the 400-square-foot deck on the south side of the house facing towards the sound. So they took off the deck, which is that grade, and they put in what I reckon to be approximately 250 square feet more of foot. It's not just 250, it's in their carport, it's 250 the first floor, 250 the second floor, and 250 in the rooftop deck. They put in 1,000 more sque- feet, excuse me, after ripping off their deck. That grade. You can't do that either. You can't, because you can't swap pieces and parts on a property that's non-conforming. The building is a non-conforming structure with two variants attached to it. To expand your non-conformance, you must have variants from you guys, the ZBA. So for any one or all three of these violations, in my opinion, I don't think that they have held to the letter or the spirit of the two variants you granted nine years ago at all. And I ask you to reject the zoning compliance of the current construction. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sergeant. Does the board have any questions for Mr. Sergeant, application? Remember, his application is to reverse or modify zoning compliance by the zoning department. And he presented the application through the assistance of Mr. Decker, putting their old application and the approvals, and then the new, the new plot plan that they had submitted. So let's go through to see if we have any questions. Terry?
No, no questions out of Terry.
Katie, do you have any questions for Mr. Sergeant?
Yes, I mean, I just wanted to clarify. So this original variance was granted based on the previous plans. Then, when the plans were changed, they were submitted, his zoning would then approve them without another variance application. It wasn't even necessary?
I think what you're asking is, should gun their variance for a new set of plans? Is that correct?
Well, are they required to?
I think it's pretty clear. Whenever you expand a building that is non-conforming, you have to get approval for that. For instance, let's say I have a driveway, a paved driveway on a property. That counts as covered district. If I rip up my paved driveway and put in a gravel driveway, whatever the dimensions of my driveway are, was, I can't just build on my house. You have to get variance.
Greg, Greg, I gotta stop you right there. That's incorrect. Driveways don't count as coverage.
Okay, so let's just stick with their, their plan, which is deck. Their deck does cover this coverage. So they're taking a deck off and they're building a bigger house. So yes, to answer your question, they modified their building plans without getting approvals from you.
Mr. Sergeant, if I can just summarize it to help you answer, enter Katie's question, is your thought is what they're doing or what the zoning department did is wrong because they should have come to this board for a variance to do what they want to do, or what they're doing?
For any one of the three.
Yep, okay.
Yeah, that answers the question.
Okay. Any other questions, Katie?
Okay, thank you.
Sharon?
Sharon has no questions.
Jane?
Jane has a couple of questions. I'm trying to read the title block. Is it the same architect who did the original plans nine years ago then has submitted the current plans that they got the permit on?
Uh, let me take a quick look, Jane.
That's a good question. I did not even look at that myself.
It's Gluckman. Uh, Gluckman Manor Architect was the one from nine years ago. And it looks like.
Capuchin Bunton. Two different ones.
Different architect.
Okay, so totally different set of drawings. Different project.
Yes.
Thank you.
Any other questions? I think you said you had a couple.
Well, that, they're, they're two separate architects. And then is the floor plan other than the third floor, the top floor identical? Or is it different from the first floor up, floor plan to floor plan?
It's different. If you look at the two A2s, the one that was emailed to you is the current one. And the first A2 had the three rectangles put together.
Right, so the, those are the site plans, but if you've had the architectural drawings as well, the floor plans would be different. First floor, second floor, would just be different.
I think, I think definitionally they'd have to be because the walls are different.
Okay, thank you.
I did not, I did not, I was not afforded to go into detail to all their building plans, you know, then or now.
Right, but, okay, that seems pretty clear. Thank you very much.
All right, so now I want to ask if anyone wants to speak in, in favor of the application of Mr. Sergeant, who's, who's aligned with his thoughts about the, this particular piece of property, 1623 Fairfield Beach Road. Anyone in favor of that application? Matt, do you see any, is there anyone? I don't see anyone.
I don't see anyone, Kevin.
Okay, now I'll call for anyone opposing this particular application. I think we have, do we have Attorney Green and?
Yes, Chairman.
Hello?
Okay. I don't know if.
Hi, hello?
Hello, Ms. Costelli?
We have Ms. Costelli and we have Attorney Green. I see Attorney Green, and I don't have a picture of Ms. Costelli, but.
I can't, do, do you, do you have it now?
We can hear you. There is your, there's your picture. Okay.
See, and my husband, hi me.
For the record, Joel Green, representing Ms. Costelli and Dr. Muller. As I understand this, the, this is an appeal by the town officer or a zoning official. And I had a feeling that the town, as has been my experience with past appeals, and as you know, we, I recently appeared before the commission, I'm sorry, before the board on an appeal. And in my past experience, in all instances, the town has made a presentation, the building official or the zoning official charged with the enforcement of the zoning regulations under the statute from which this appeal pursuant to Section 8-6 make a presentation to the board as to the basis for the decision that is being appealed. And I don't know if the zoning official is prepared to do that at this hearing, but always in my experience in the past, and for example, we had the Cirillo and Glover. And as you remember, we had that fall and Mr. Went appeared and presented his position. So, hold on, Attorney Green, just one second. Matt, we lost you for a second.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I'm back. My apologies.
Attorney Green, go ahead.
I'm an interested party, I'm a applicant, but the respondent in the charged with the enforcement of the zoning regulations who made the decision. I'm at a bit of a loss here procedurally. I'm a bit of a loss here procedurally. I've never had an appeal to ZBA where the owner of the property is defending. I, I understand, we support the decision, and I can speak to my support of the decision, but the party, the appellee or respondent is the official.
Agreed. I, I think they're probably going to speak to that, I hope. If it goes out of order, if you would rather them go first, that, I mean, I don't necessarily have a problem for that, but.
I would, because I would, rather than my speaking twice and duplicating them, but even under, under any circumstances, as I understand it procedurally, and whenever we've done this in the past, I, I or the public come last, in that, in the, the appealing party certainly gets the last word, but, so I'm, I'm a little bit, I guess I'm appealing to you, Mr. Chairman, would like to hear.
And that, that's fine. I assume that the, the town would, in my experience, the town would state why they made a decision.
I would like to just, if it is okay, to, to take only two minutes to add something to what our lawyer said.
I don't want to cut you off, but Attorney Green, I, I know he raises hand, I always give an opportunity for lawyers to speak first, when, when they want that opportunity, but he's requesting that the town speak, so I, I have to agree with him, that if, if the town and zoning department is going to state why they made the decision, that they should do that, and then you can make a comment, as, as your attorney can. Okay?
Okay, thank you, thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Decker?
I am going to defer to Mr. Went. I believe he's either on the phone, or he's getting on the phone, to speak on behalf of my office and the issuance of the permit.
I'm on the phone, can you, can everybody hear me?
Perfect.
Yes.
So this is Jim Went, for, for the record. So I, I agree that there's been a change in the plan, there are two different architects, it's a different roof design, we, we have no quarrel with those facts as they were laid out by, by Mr. Sargent. Our position on this is the height relative to what the variance was granted has not changed. What, what has changed in the intervening nine years is the, the flood map has changed that requires a higher starting elevation for the, for the first floor, which raised the house in absolute terms and by, by a couple of feet. But in terms of the calculation of the midpoint of the height, the difference between what the permitted height is and what the variance was granted has, has not changed. So the magnitude of the height variance that the board had granted, which was the variance that was approved in, however many years ago it was, nine or 11 years ago now, has, has remained the same. The design has changed, but, but the, the magnitude of the difference in what the permitted height would be versus what the variance that was granted has not changed. Even though that there was a, a change in the design of the, of the style of the house, the footprint, the lot coverage is compliant, it was compliant before, there was no variance with respect to the overall size of the dwelling in the original application, it was the number of dwellings on the lot in the height. And we did review it, and we did recognize that there are some changes to the plan, as pointed out by Mr. Sargent, but in our view, we didn't think it was of a magnitude that warranted a new application to the zoning board of appeals. That's really the long and the short of it. It's the reg changed that pushed the starting point of the house up a little bit, and they get credit for that under the regulations, but how height is calculated under the revised plan, the, the ultimate measurement of that height does not exceed the scope of the variance that had been previously granted. It may be modestly larger in terms of the footprint of that third floor attic space that, that variance applies to, and I don't argue with that part of the, the presentation, but we didn't think that changed the scope of the variance that was ultimately approved. So that is why we went forward with the, the issuance of that permit, because we didn't believe it changed the scope of the, the variance that was first approved.
All right, thank you, Mr. Went. Just, does the, does the board have any questions for Jim Went? Terry?
Terry does not.
Jane?
Jane does not.
Katie?
Katie does not.
Sharon?
Sharon does not.
Okay, great. Thank you, Mr. Went. Attorney Green, would you speak first, or does your client, Mr. Speak?
I think what I'd like to, at this point, introduce my, who just wants to correct on certain facts that were made, put into the record by the appellant.
Yes, basically, what I wanted to simply say is that I feel we have been a little bit portrayed as people who made a certain plan to treat the zoning and then change it. What has been really happening is that the permit was requested before or during the time of Irene storm. After that, there was Sandy, and after that, we postponed the building of the house again and again, because there was a long time of uncertainty in which the town was not really sure whether the relation of the houses are to be changed. And so we, we waited because we wanted to do things according to the rule of the towns, and we were not sure exactly what this rule were going to be. There was a time in which things were changing. We loved our deck, but we had to give the deck out when the house, according to the new regulation, had to be up on stilts, because the deck was originally in front of the house. And at that point, we would have basically been not allowed by the town to build this deck in front of the house. There were so many changes that after we came up with a good design for the house that pleased both us and our architect, last year in March, the town told us, we're okay with this, but the, the, the survey we have on file from you is still dating from 2011, we want a new one. We got a new survey done, and the new survey proved that our property lost 2,000 square feet. As a result of that, we had to redesign the house and make it smaller. And if you look at the size of the house, that, including the deck that was presented in 2011, and the total plan of the new house now is over 100 square foot smaller for each floor, the loss of this 100 square foot that multiplied by three means 300, anyway, implied that we had to redesign many things because we had to accommodate the mechanic in an area that we didn't have available anymore. And we never had any complaint with the town about this, because we thought the town was doing their job. And, and we never intended to trick anybody or do any, anything unlawful. And we felt that the town absolutely did the things that the town was supposed to do with us. Nobody did any favor as it is proper. And we constantly contacted them, asking advice, shall we do this? Is that okay? Is this not okay? And often they told us, no, this you cannot do, and we look for alternative. So I want to clarify clearly, our house now, the square footage of the house is a much is smaller than the square footage of the house that was proposed in 2011, when we got the variance, based on a new survey requested by the town in 2019.
Thank you, Ms. Castelli. Attorney Green?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Again, for the record, Joel Green. I would just, to make a few points, I certainly echo the comments of Mr. Went, and I may repeat some of them, so forgive me, but the starting point is the variance that was granted by the commission on July 7th of 2011. And I have the minutes of that meeting, and I did not submit them yesterday. I can email them to the commission, I'm sorry, to the board, if you'd like, and I have that queued up, if you want me to send them. But I can represent to the board that, a good starting point is that the minutes granted, reference variance being granted, and there was no condition of any kind imposed, first of all, on the specific house or the specific dimension of the area of the variance. In other words, that this specific structure had to be built as a condition of the height variance of 1.3 feet. And that is significant, as.
Let me just, let me interrupt. If you can do that, you can have someone do that, if you could send that to the board, Mr. Decker, as well as Mr. Sargent.
I don't, I just hit the send key, and hopefully you'll have that in an instant. I sent it to Mr. Decker, and I copied the board. Hopefully you'll have that.
Did you send it to Mr. Sargent?
I, Mr. Sargent's email. So I.
I forwarded it on to Mr. Sargent.
Let's just make sure Mr. Sargent gets that, and then you can continue while we're getting that, while we're waiting to see that.
I presume you've received it now?
Not yet. Takes a while for mine to come through.
So.
I got it just forwarded to Mr. Sargent.
So.
Go ahead.
So the minutes do go through the. The, it's not a condition of the vote that that specific house actually ultimately had to be built. As I had noted, the house is actually indicated smaller, not compared to the documents. The, as Mr. Went indicated, the starting higher, I think the significant thing that Mr. Sargent is not accounting for in his presentation is that admittedly, the roof went from a perfectly flat roof to a modestly pitched roof. And I think a significant point is the measurement of roof height, where you're dealing with a pitched roof. And the regulations say, and the regulations change the method of measurement. So it is, once again, this is a very, very modestly pitched roof, as you can see from the drawing that Mr. Sargent submitted. So I think that the point is that Mr. Went, Mr. Decker, in the document, interpreted that there's a 1.3 foot height variance, but the way the roof is designed and drawn, it is zoning compliant, subject to the 1.3 foot variance. So I think that Mr. Sargent's complaints regarding the height and bulk and design are not supported by the regulations or by the applicable law. And I think that the structure is compliant, 1.3 foot variance. And I would urge the commission, I'm sorry, I would urge the board to deny the appeal and uphold the ruling by, I don't know if you have questions for me?
Does the, does anyone have any questions for Attorney Green?
No questions out of Terry.
Okay.
Sharon has no questions.
Jane?
Actually, I do have a question. I'm looking at a typical application for zoning variance, it requires drawings to be attached to the application. Doesn't that imply that those are the drawings that the application is for, and not some future changes?
It does, but the, but the variance gets granted as to height, and if the structure complies in all other respects in the future, you have that height variance. For example, if you have a house that's been around thirty years, that was originally built with a height variance, and you modify the house years later, if you're within that height variance, you don't need a new variance. Be my position.
But that's, you're talking about an existing house?
I don't think there's a distinction, and the way that the roof line, roof height is measured, it is not specifically, the approval, once again, was not specifically conditioned on this particular design.
The actual variance application are drawings that are part of the application. You're saying it could be any set of drawings?
It could be smaller, it could be, I mean, and this house apparently is smaller, for example, and that's why Mr. Went and Mr. Decker approved it, I believe.
Thank you. That's it, thank you.
Okay, Katie? Questions?
Questions.
All right, anything further, Attorney Green?
Nothing, Mr. Chairman. Thank the board.
I received, I think everyone has received the, the minutes that you referred to. Okay. Mr. Sargent, you have an opportunity to address the, the comments and opposition, which would be both Mr. Went, Attorney Green, and his client.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I was packed with stuff to pick away at. I want me to start with saying a tremendous respect for Mr. Went. I think he does a great job in a very difficult role, but I have to disagree with everything he said. And Mr. Green knows as well as anyone that the Marikawa decision out of Weston is that there's a bright line, whether it's one inch or one foot, if you exceed, if you exceed what you actually are granted, then it's a violation. Now, Mrs. Castelli says the footprint is smaller. Yes, it is smaller. I totally agree. If you look at the 2A2s, I pointed it out, it went from 19.9% down to 18.9%. That is not the relevant point here. The point is, they took off a 400 square foot deck and padded it into a house that is already on variances. You're expanding their variances. If you allow this to stand, it creates a moral hazard. It means that any person, any homeowner, any developer, can lie to your steel to get whatever variance they want on a set of plans they submit, wait some time, redo the plans, maybe get a different architect, and tack the variances back on top of whatever they achieved earlier on. That's moral hazard. You can't submit, once, get some variances, resubmit nine years later, and tack the variances on top of that. And that's outrageous. But there's other things going on here. Let's talk about the, how Mrs. Castelli says that the footprint is going down. It is, as I mentioned, the footprint's going down. The deck, the 400 square foot deck in the front of the house, this terror has been torn off to add to the structure. Now, that deck was zoning compliant in the sense that it was in front of the house, towards the water, and if it was not zoning compliant, they would need a variance from 11.12, a setback from Long Island Sound. And I'll read this into the record. Specifically, it says, and I quote, "The minimum setback of buildings and structures from Long Island Sound shall not be close to the front wall of the building existing as of the date of the adoption of these Beach District regulations facing Long Island Sound." Dot, dot, dot. This setback shall apply, also apply to fences and other structures more than one foot above the ground. So their deck, by being at grade, counts as coverage, but does not induce a setback variance. So they had a deck that was compliant. These, the zoning department did not ask them for it to get a variance for 11.12 in their application. They got a height and they got 11.1.1. So then I'll refer you to the deck that is compliant to the general provisions, section 2.0. The general provisions are just the overreaching umbrella-like, if you will, that all the districts must abide by. And I'll point to 2.8, continuation of non-conforming uses. Any use of land, buildings and other structures, and any buildings or other structures lawfully existing on the effective date of the zoning regulations or any amendment thereto, which use does not conform to one or more of the provisions of the zoning regulations may be continued in accordance with the following provisions. No non-conforming use of land, building, or any other structure shall be changed to any other use, any use, excuse me, unless such new use is substantially a conforming use. That is very strict. They, a deck within their design was zoning compliant by 11.12. They ripped the deck off, they put it into the side of the house, which is using 11.1.1 and 11.7, the height variance, and expanding their variances. They took conforming and went to non-conforming. Our regulations do not allow that. You can have non-conforming and maintain non-conforming. You can have non-conforming and move to conforming. You can't go from conforming to non-conforming. The removal of the deck and adding to the house has reduced the footprint, the percentage of lot coverage. I will agree with Mrs. Castelli and Mr. Green completely. I will stipulate, as long as they stipulate, that the added coverage to the habitable space increased. It went up even as the percentage of coverage went down. Moreover, no one addressed the volume of space that is actually in height variance level. That thing went from 128 square feet to about 450 square feet. No one addressed that at all.
Sounds like great guy.
So
Sounds like great talking.
In layman's terms, it's like this. They showed me a set of plans. I said, okay, it looks reasonable. I sign off on the piece of paper. I go to their ZBA hearing and I speak on their behalf. They get their two variances granted by you. They don't perform and do what they said they were going to do. They're better off. I'm worse off. That's a prima facie case against me. They are better off with a higher building with a larger area up in the height zone. I am worse off. They did not apply for it. They shouldn't be allowed to have it. So you can look at it in two ways. One is, of course, is a breach of contract. Or you could look at it as fraud. Now alleging fraud, but certainly it's possible to scheme. Okay? And Mr. Green talked about how a variance attached to the land. I'm not contesting state law here. Variants do attach land. They don't attach the structure to the owner. I get it. Variances can only attach if they are acquired through good faith, not under false pretenses. Those variances never attached because the building as designed nine years ago was never built. Now, we know the remedy here. This is not very difficult. Write in our zoning regs. Ask you to overturn the zoning compliance and have them apply for a special exception from the town plan and zoning commission. This is consistent with our regs right here, 11.4 for multiple dwelling units. I'll make reference, one last point, and I know it's been a long presentation. I'll make one last reference to the original variance application and why I'm suggesting that they get the special exception. And this goes back to PDF 5 and PDF 6, which was their original hardship, the one they created. It says, "The applicant also requests permission to construct two new dwellings to replace the two dwellings located on the property. For discussion with zoning department staff, there are two regulatory options to reach this end. Either an application can be made as here or 11.4, the regulations can be utilized. An application can be made to the town plan and zoning commission. In the interest of time and administrative efficiency, applications being made to this board." "The important fact considered is that section 11.4 of the Beach District explicitly permits the construction of one or more dwellings and replacement of the same or existing dwelling units provided all the requirements are satisfied. All other relevant requirements are satisfied, including specifically the relevant coverage restrictions." Now, normally I'd say that it's okay to get a variance. But they already took that bite of the apple. You can't go back and double dip. They need to go to the commission because they have shown themselves untrustworthy in utilizing the variances you granted them nine years ago with the plans they gave you. This is not an overly onerous hurdle. I mean, these people have waited nine years to start building their structure. I think they can wait a few months to let the commission review their plans. Thank you once again.
Thank you, Mr. Sargent. That closes the hearing on 1623 Fairfield Beach Road. It's also referred to in the call as 1609 and 1623 Fairfield Beach Road. Next matters are 8A, 8B. Those have been continued to the June 11 docket. The final matter that we have is 3135. It's number nine, 3135 Easton Turnpike. Matt, 22/51, parcel 91/44, B as in Boy, slash 44C as in Charlie. Petition of Sacred Heart University for a variance of the zoning regulations, section 5.2.2, to increase the height of a new building from 40 feet, posing 56 feet. Permission to construct a new hockey arena premises R3. Attorney Fitzpatrick, I believe this is you?
It is, Mr. Chairman. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, for the record, my name's Bill Fitzpatrick. I'm an attorney in Fairfield with the Law Firm of Fitzpatrick, Frank Bologna. I appreciate the cooperation of the zoning board and the zoning department staff in arranging for this virtual public meeting in the midst of this pandemic, and I appreciate your patience. I'm here this afternoon representing Sacred Heart University, the owners of the former GE property at 3135 Easton Turnpike, which is now known as the Sacred Heart University West Campus. Property contains approximately 68 and a half acres. Rightly. This building is zoned for the GE use as design research district. The underlying zone of the property is the R3 residential district. Zoning regulations permit the use of property in an overlay zone for any use permitted in the underlying zone. In this case, the underlying zone is R3, and a university use is a permitted use in the R3 zone via special exception approval. Several years ago, the university, I think it was 2017, received an approval from the Town Plan and Zoning Commission for a change of use for this property from office to uni- from office to university use. Sacred Heart University West Campus contains three primary buildings, two office buildings constructed in 1973. It consists of offices with structured parking below. Office building to the east includes a single courtyard in the middle, contains approximately 172,000 plus square feet. The second building to the west has two courtyards, contains approximately 291,000 square feet. There is a third building to the west constructed in 1984. It's a three-story hotel conference center. The intent of the university is to construct a recreational facility consisting of a hockey arena to be located to the north of the easterly office building. Board members will recall that a similar variance application was heard by the board in December of 2019. The ZBA approved the application of the board at that time was a height variance application for a hockey arena and a natatorium. Why is this variance application back before the board? The earlier ZBA application, which was a larger facility, it then included a swimming pool complex. Now it does not, was located to the west of the present proposed location and would result in the elimination of an inland wetland. Mr. Kevin Herrick of SLAM, the project architect who is presenting this application with me this afternoon, will highlight, highlight the location of that wetland area in the course of his presentation. The university's wetlands experts believe the loss of this wetland area would be more than offset by various wetland mitigation measures on site. The town of Fairfield Conservation Department staff made it clear to the university. They strongly objected to any loss of wetland soil. The Conservation Department staff predicted a negative reaction by the Conservation Commission itself to the elimination of the wetland area. As a result, the university has revised its plan, is proposing a smaller building housing only the hockey arena, and has re-located that area to the east, thereby preserving that wetland area it issued. Return to the specifics of this variance request. The height limitation in the residence R3 zone is 40 feet or three stories, whichever is less. Behind the proposed hockey arena as defined in section 31.2.16 of the regulations is the greater of the measurement to average existing grade or the proposed grade. We did submit height calculations accompanying this application. In this instance, the measurement to average existing grade is the greater number resulting in a proposed height of the structure of 55.3 feet. As a result, the application before you is requesting a variance of section 5.2.2 of the zoning regulations to allow an increase in height from the permitted 40 feet to 56 feet in conjunction with the construction of the hockey arena. This is a greater variance request than the original variance request in December, which was from 40 feet to 45 feet. But it's important to note two facts. One, the proposed building is essentially the same building with the exception of the removal of the swimming pool component. The hockey arena itself is no higher than the hockey arena, which was approved by this board last December. Secondly, the top of the proposed building, in terms of the measurement of the elevation figure, is 252.9 feet, less than two feet higher than the elevation of the earlier approved building, which had a top of roof elevation of 251.1 feet. The reason the earlier variance request, the earlier variance application requested a lesser variance for a building of the same height is because of the way the zoning regulations measure height. The proposed building is on flatter ground, which restricts the ability to sink the building into the side slope, as was the case with the original December plan, and results in a greater height calculation. Again, the building itself is the same height as the building approved in December. At this point, Mr. Chairman, I'm hoping to introduce Mr. Kevin Herrick, the head of the University Practice Section of the SLAM Collaborative. Mr. Herrick is an architect who has appeared before this board before. Kevin?
Thank you, Bill. Matt, I'm going to take on the screen, if that's okay?
Absolutely. Thank you.
Matt, if I guess, just get a check, are you seeing my screen? Should be a title slide with Sacred Heart University on it.
Sacred Heart University.
Terrific.
Yep, first page.
Thanks, Bill, and thanks to the committee for having us today. We're going to present the mock site design, which is, as Mr. Fitzpatrick just stated, driven the project to make two notable revisions. A new location that's approximately 300 feet to the east, which will avoid any disruption to the existing wetland. And then also, secondly, removing the natatorium from the project, which is about a 60,000 square foot reduction in total building area. I'll begin with last December's aerial rendering, showing the facility as approved. A couple of things that are worth pointing out here, if I could. Okay, so this is a 3D graphic, so bear with me. This is the approximate location of the wetland, because this is in perspective. You should know, I would note that the footprint was actually not in the wetland before, but that's the way it would look in perspective. So, and secondly, this, we're going to talk about moving the facility. There we go. To this location. This is about 300 feet to the east. It is not getting larger. It's just simply getting closer to you in perspective. This yellow box, as I said, represents about 220,000 square feet versus the gray box beyond, which represents about 280,000 square feet. This next view represents the current design that we're presenting within our application. One thing to note is the existing grade is lower. I'm going to draw on my screen here, if I can figure that out. So one thing to note is where we were starting before is simply higher than we're starting now as we move it to the east building. And there, and the grade also falls off a little bit quicker on this corner of the site. Generally speaking, we're just sliding the building over laterally, except that the existing grade is falling off. And as everybody knows very well, on this commission, that's key in calculating building height in the town of Fairfield. One thing that I would point out is the existing west building, which I'll mark with a W, and the east building, which I'll mark with an E, represent some significant indoor parking opportunities. In fact, this little connector here connects the upper level of the arena directly into the east building parking, which accommodates not only standard parking spaces, but handicap ones. And that's critical as we want to maintain a level connection between the two facilities. We don't want to start dropping it off down the hill and creating significant ramping required. Maybe a little more tangible is a view like this. This is not quite an eye level or a bird's level view, but I think gives you a good representation of the east building to the left here. Again, I'll mark with the letter E, and the arena. And you can see that we are noticeably lower than the top elevation of the east building. The east building is about nine feet lower than the west building. We're about 35 feet lower than the east building here. So if you would, and I'll show this a little more directly in section. That perspective there represents about 35-foot difference. All of this is about hockey now. This is the, the idea is the inside room is the same as it was when we came to you in December. There just is no natatorium in the project any longer. So we see this as very much the same, still continuing to seat 3,000. This is actually an important section. This is the same section that we presented in December. This is the west building. This is the west building, uh, to the right. Over here, uh, and then this you can see obviously was the hockey arena and the natatorium. Uh, adjacent just north of the west building. Uh, at that time, uh, we were about forty six feet below the top part of the west building. As I flip to the next slide, which is drawn at the same scale, and you can actually, uh, you can see in our graphic from December, we're showing the east building. Uh, beyond there. Uh, so as we move the building, you can see the footprint has shrunk significantly. Uh, we essentially are almost the same floor elevation, and I'll go over what the difference is in a minute. Some of the key numbers here are, uh, here is the west building difference between the, I'm sorry, let me start again. This is the difference between the west building and the east building, that nine feet. And then we are again thirty five feet below the east building. Uh, this section does, uh, give us a good idea of this connection that we're trying to make. Uh, the approximate two feet, uh, raising of the buildings, uh, floor elevation. That Bill mentioned a few moments ago is really due to an existing condition in the east building parking. Uh, I can imagine when you enter the east building on the other side, it actually enters one foot nine inches lower. Than where we want to, well, where ultimately we would now be connecting to. And the reason for that gentle slope inside the facility, uh, is simply to provide drainage of snow getting tracked in and on the cars. And so that can take water away and into floor drains, things like that. So, uh, in order to make a, a good level, uh, connection into the suite level from the east parking. Uh, we have raised up the suite level to one foot nine inches to provide a level access there. Elevation, uh, and I'm gonna, uh, take the opportunity to use PowerPoint here, sometimes PowerPoint can be frustrating, but if I toggle back and forth. I'd like you to look at, uh, this section right here, which is really what's, uh, what's driving the change in the height. Um, so if we look at before, you can see the existing grade up here at two oh six. Uh, and then if we advance, you can now see that existing grade shown in red. But now in this part of the site, the existing grade is down at one ninety seven point five, about eight foot nine inches lower. Uh, than the previous, uh, locations existing grade. An existing grade is the, uh, restricting factor on calculating building height. Uh, it was before, although the difference, uh, in December between existing and proposed grade was only about a foot or so. Uh, and, and now we're almost nine feet difference, uh, from that. Uh, nearing the end here, these are, this is the exact, uh. Uh, excerpt from, uh, what you have in your, uh, submission and the application. Uh, so these calculate, this is how we calculate the, uh, proposed, uh, and existing average grades. We know that the, uh, so what I've taken the liberty to do here is show the deltas from the December application. Uh, with the actuals from this application, so the club, club, the club level at two twenty five point five. Uh, the average, I'm gonna jump down to the average existing grade here at one ninety seven is almost nine feet, uh, below. Uh, from where we previously were, uh, the building roof elevation, I mentioned that's about one foot nine inches higher. Uh, again, being driven by, uh, a level connection into the east parking, uh, the northern part of the east parking. And then our average building height being represented, the difference between the, uh, roof elevation and the. Uh, average existing grade of fifty five point three, about ten and a half feet above where we were, uh, in, in December. Uh, interestingly enough, uh, it has not affected, uh, this image, uh, the same image that we presented. Uh, in December's application, although the building has moved. Uh, I, uh, I still continue to use this one, the trees had not greened up at the time we took. Uh, well, not greened up, it was the, you know, and it was the middle of December, so, uh, there were no leaves on the trees here. Um, and so I use reuse this to show that, uh, the new facility is still not visible. Uh, from eastern turnpike, even when you're, uh, set across the street like we were in this camera position. So, um. I think, uh, at this point, I'll turn it back to Mister Fitzpatrick and let him close, and then I think he'll probably open it up for any questions and answers.
Thank you, Kevin. Mister Chairman, to sum up. The test for, test for the granting of a variance is set forth in the Archibald versus Wadlow case. Twenty five Connecticut appellate, three seventy five. And nineteen ninety one case which states. Quote regarding hardship under general statute, section eight dash six parents, three N parents. Local zoning board may grant a variance where two basic conditions are met. One, the variance is shown not to affect substantially the comprehensive zoning plan. And two, adherence to the strict letter of the zoning regulations. You shown to cause unusual hardship unnecessary to the carrying out of the general purpose of the zoning plan. The first part of the test, no substantial effect on the comprehensive zoning plan. Is satisfied here where the proposed use, the hockey arena. Is certainly an appurtenant use to the approved university use for the west campus. The second part of the test adherence to the strict letter of the zoning regulations. Is shown to cause unusual hardship unnecessary to the general purpose of the zoning plan is satisfied here, I would submit by several factors. Proposed location of the arena permits access from this facility to this facility from the new south lobby building. Which is being constructed at the westerly end. The existing courtyard on the other side of the office buildings. This location also permits access to the existing structured parking, particularly the east building. The utilization of that structured parking is key to the proper functioning of this building. It's important to note that the proposed location of this hockey arena building, it results in virtually no visual impact. On the residential property to the south and the east. As you saw, this building is significantly lower than both the adjacent east building. Thirty five feet lower and the west building forty four feet lower, shielding it from residential properties to the south. The land to the west is the cascades, which is open space, the property to the north is the Merritt Parkway. And you saw the view from the east. Um, I would like to address the letters, uh, by and large from the condominium development on the other.
Attorney Fitzpatrick, let me just, let me interrupt Jesus to make it a little bit smoother, there, there might be other people that are opposition. So, uh, if you would like, I, I have you address those in a rebuttal format, cause I'm just gonna identify them for the record. As to the names of that were submitted, cause all the board members have seen those emails.
So you preferred in rebuttal, Mister Chairman?
Yes, if you don't, that's what I.
That's, that's fine, um, let me just move on a little here. Um, the university has a division one hockey program and is anxious to have a facility on campus, which will provide an opportunity. For the hockey team, the club team, et cetera, to have ready access to the arena for both practice and games. There will be utilization of the arena by the town of Fairfield High School team. The details of such use will be outlined at the town plan and zoning commission meeting, which is required for this application. To briefly sum up, the proposed hockey arena is a smaller building than that approved by the ZBA in December. The proposed arena is the same height as the building approved by the ZBA in December. The building originally approved by the ZBA was reduced inside and relocated due to topographical considerations. Specifically, the presence of a pocket wetland. The proposal here results in no loss of wetlands. The proposed arena is an important university amenity, which requires a height variance to satisfy the practical building requirements. The ZBA has consistently recognized the unique nature of the university use and has approved appropriate height variances in the past. The approval of this variance permits the construction of an important. Uni- university recreational facility. And results in virtually no visual impact any neighboring property owners. For these reasons, I'd request this variance application be approved. Mister Herrick and I would be happy to answer any questions, thank you.
Thank you, Attorney Fitzpatrick, uh, now, that, that, uh, the board, if we have any questions for Attorney Fitzpatrick or Mister Herrick on the presentation. Uh, Sharon, do you have any questions?
Hi, I have several.
Okay.
Hi, um, while you state that it was approved, I did not approve this application last time, and I still have the same concerns. My concern one is the volume of cars, how many games are going to be? How that's gonna be handled with one-way streets in a neighborhood, um, the cascades backs onto homes. The sound levels, um, the sound levels for the nature around it, I think my guesstimate, I may be wrong, it's about three hundred acres of wetlands and a lake. Um. Just in terms of, you know, emergency services getting through and how that will be handled. And what is the actual hardship since the university actually uses Webster Arena? And there are many universities that do not have hockey rinks on their grounds. And still use neighboring arenas, and that's not truly a hardship because they have a facility they can play in currently.
Mister Chairman, would you like me to respond?
Uh, yes, um, if you, you can respond on order, and if you miss one, uh, I'll ask Sharon to point out what you missed in response.
Traffic issues are under the jurisdiction of the town plan and zoning commission, not the zoning board of appeals. The hockey arena will require the submission of a special exception application to the town plan and zoning commission. The zoning regulations specifically delegate to the town plan and zoning commission the authority to review special exception applications. The special exception section of the zoning regs, section twenty seven makes specific reference to traffic considerations. The bottom line is that traffic, traffic issues are a valid consideration for the town plan and zoning commission. I should note that a detailed traffic study is in the process of preparation. And will be submitted to the town plan and zoning commission as part of the special exception application. So while it is a valid P and Z consideration, it is not relevant to this zoning board of appeals application. The same is true of noise and sound levels. That's an issue which is covered under the section twenty seven and section twenty five of the zoning regulations. And that will be dealt with, with the university application to the town plan and zoning commission. Um, the hardship here, I think I was the same argument that I made last time. And the application was indeed approved by the zoning board of appeals last time. That is, you have a unique use, you have an important university appurtenance. You have a university appurtenance, which is a building which requires additional height because of the nature of the building. As Mister Herrick pointed out, and in, at the December meeting. You need twenty five feet clear, you need a scoreboard, you need a certain height to accommodate. The use for which the hockey arena is designed, and you end up in a situation. Where the hockey arena is actually thirty five feet less and forty four feet less than existing buildings on campus. So I don't know how there can be an argument that it poses a height issue. That would be my response.
Sharon, has he answered your questions?
Yes and no, um, you know, I still don't see why there's an actual hardship to have this on campus. They actually have a facility to play hockey in. So if we're going to a hardship. The university has functioned for more than twenty something years, longer than that actually, and they've been able to use a facility. That they currently use, many universities do not have hockey rinks on their campus. So I, I still don't see where the actual hardship is.
The university has the right to have any buildings it sees fit on its campus. If it can accomplish floor area and coverage ratios. This is clearly a university use, it's something they wish to construct. The only issue here is one of height. It still has to go to P and Z, still has to be reviewed for floor area and coverage. But clearly it complies with floor area and coverage, this is one issue before this board, it's height. And I think Mister Herrick and I have explained in some length why the height's appropriate. It's significantly less than existing buildings on campus, and it's the height that's required. For this kind of arena to function properly as an NCAA hockey arena.
This Mister Herrick actually pointed out that it would have no impact on the immediate community. So that's why I'm raising these questions. He just said that it wouldn't impact the neighbors to the east, to the south, or the cascades. He just said that a few minutes ago.
I pointed out that you couldn't see it from the south. He showed a slide that you couldn't see it from the east, and I don't think you can see it through the cascades.
Do you have a, do you have a slide showing it from, do you have a slide?
Traffic issue, if there's a sound issue, that's something that's a different issue, and that's a P and Z issue, and we will be addressing that at some length. At the plan and zoning commission.
Do you have a slide showing it from the, cause I, I drive on eastern turnpike, sport hill, that section, Strathfield Road. Do you have a slide showing it from the front entrance of the campus, west campus?
The only slide we have is what Mister Herrick showed.
Right, so that's not the section where the, where the building's gonna be placed.
Going to be right in front of that east building, the east building was shown on the slide.
Right, but not from the street perspective.
Okay, further questions, Sharon, or?
That's all I have at the moment, that's all I have at the moment.
Jane, do you have any questions? You need to unmute, Jane.
Hi, sorry, I was not at the December hearing, so this is the first time I'm reviewing this application, I did not. Attend the last one, so I'm seeing this with fresh eyes. I know Sharon asked this, but the hardship, can you explain how the hardship is tied to the particular property?
First of all, you have a sixty five acre parcel with a, I think a unique use, which in this case is the university. Secondly, you've got a situation where the only variance application before this board is one for height. Two A says you need this much height to accomplish a hockey arena that satisfies NCAA standards. The question becomes, well, is it appropriate for this site? I think it becomes clearly appropriate for this site when you have sixty five acres to deal with. And when you've been forced to move it because of a wetland and the conservation commission. And you end up, again, from a height standpoint, with a building which has a top of roof thirty five feet less. Than the east building directly adjacent to it and forty four feet less than the existing west building on the same parcel.
So what is the unique attribute of this property that requires the, that, that forms the hardship?
That you've got a sixty five acre parcel that's been converted to university use. And you have, you are able, because it is a sixty five acre parcel, to minimize the impact on, on any surrounding neighbors.
Yeah.
Katie, do you have any questions?
No, I don't have any questions.
Terry, do you have any questions?
Terry has no questions.
Okay, any further questions?
I did, I did, I'm sorry, hi. Hi, so will they be able to provide a street presentation from Sport Hill Road? From the angle where the building's gonna be built, because where they're showing. Is an obstructed area of the west, where the west building is, so you wouldn't see anything either way. So there's, there's different angles to that property. And there's an entrance where you come through like a gated area or a guard area. And I was curious if they had a street presentation of that.
Kevin, do you have anything, any slide they can show that address this issue?
Um, I could, uh, I, yeah, I could, uh, I put, it's on the street, if that's, if that's, uh, is that what we wanna do? You wanna go out in the street in front of the guardhouse?
Yes.
Uh, sure, okay, let me, uh. I'm gonna take back the screen, Matt, if that's okay. So it is, I, I think this is what we're talking about here. Uh, and you can see, you can barely see the guard house, uh, let alone the east building, which would be taller. Is this? see the guardhouse, let alone the east building, which would be taller. Is this, I don't want to presume, is this where we're talking about going?
Hi, yes, I was just curious, beyond the guardhouse, will you see any part of the building?
That's on campus.
I couldn't tell that, I couldn't tell the perspective, so since there was no image, I, I know you had drawings, and the drawing from the far side going towards, I guess into Straffield itself, you know, wasn't where the building was going to be built. So I wanted to see the perspective from this intersection. Thank you.
No problem.
Anything further, Sharon?
No, that's all. Thank you.
Anyone in favor of the application? I'm scrolling to see if there's any hand raised. Matt, do you see any hands?
I do not. I do not.
Okay. In a moment, I'm gonna call anyone who wants to speak in opposition, but before I do that, I just want to point out that the, the board has received emails from various neighbors, and I just want to identify them that had voiced in opposition for traffic, noise, air pollution, et cetera. They're all part of the record. The people include Thomas and Ellen Maxwell, 63 Kerry Circle, John and Dorothy Eidenberg of 40 Kerry Circle, Robert Rifkin of, no, Robert Rifkin, also in that community, Straffield Falls condominium, Jean, John and Jeannie Russo of 64 Kerry Circle, Harvey and Gail Hoffman, also of Straffield Falls area, 44 Kerry Circle. We have Ricky Reiner of, in that same neighborhood, don't have a specific address, but they did send an email. I'm not sharing their email address on the public forum. I have a Lois Gibson, also of that area of Straffield Falls condo, Gibson, I'm sorry, Lois Gibson and Charles Gibson, Herman Klein, 100 Hillary Circle, a Gary and Donna Jackson, 52 Kerry Circle, a Richard Kenyon of 60 Kerry Circle, a Michael Ian of 101 Hillary Circle, David Wall of 115 Hillary Circle, and we've got the Hoffmans twice. And then the last is from Alfred Tridell, president of Straffield Falls, 59 Kerry Circle. Those people have voiced their opposition by way of email for the, the notice that was sent out by the town to have any opposition submitted to us before we close the hearing. So I just wanted to make sure that those people were recognized as having an opposition. And Attorney Fitzpatrick, you'll have an opportunity to address those, and anyone else that will be speaking today. So now, please let us know if you would like to speak in opposition to this. You can do it by raise your hand function. I don't want anyone just shouting out at once. Anyone else in opposition? Are you aware of anyone?
Emmeline had told me that there was a Ian Michael.
Okay, I see a call-in user number five. It's recognized. They haven't spoken yet. I see a Bill. That hasn't spoken yet.
I think it's Attorney Fitzpatrick.
Oh, sorry, Bill.
This is Michael Ian. Can you hear me?
Oh, Michael Ian, yes. Is that you, Mr. Ian?
Yes, it is.
Okay, we can hear you.
Mr. Ian, you submitted a letter as well, correct? An email?
That's right, I did.
All right, you're free to also voice here on the record. Please do, please do so, sir.
Okay, well, in general, I am not opposed to the, to the hockey rink if Fairfield has a fair shake at using some of the ice time. My, my boys were on the high school hockey team in their day, and now my grandson is. And we always had to go up to Wonderland of Ice in Bridgeport for practice and for games. And I think it's long overdue that Fairfield had a hockey rink. So I just want to make sure that under a good neighbor policy, that Sacred Heart University comes to an agreement prior to granting their waiver, that indeed Fairfield Town will have some ice time, not only for the hockey team at the high schools, but also for a youth hockey league. And I just wanted to make sure that was clear. And I'm also concerned about the traffic, which has been addressed by other people.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else as opposition?
Nobody else on the phone that I'm aware of, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, I see a, a couple people that haven't spoken yet. I don't know if they're wanting to speak. Please do so. There's a Janet and a Jerry.
Jerry, I think, works for the town.
Okay.
He's the IT, he's the IT gentleman. I think he just signed in for a test.
All right, I just wanted to make sure everyone has had the opportunity. I think we've given it enough time. Attorney Fitzpatrick, would you like to address, I mean, you've received all of those emails as well, want to address those, and Mr. Ian's comments?
I will, Mr. Chairman. I looked at the letters, by and large, from the condominium development on the other side of Eastern Turnpike. Those letters primarily address two points, traffic and environmental issues. Environmental issues in the town of Fairfield are within the jurisdiction of the Conservation Commission, not the Zoning Board of Appeals. Similarly, traffic issues are under the jurisdiction of the Town Plan and Zoning Commission, not the Zoning Board of Appeals. And as I stated earlier, the hockey arena will require the submission of a special exception application to the Town Plan and Zoning Commission. The zoning regulations specifically delegate the authority to review special exception regulations to the P and Z. The special exception section of the regs, section 27, makes specific reference to traffic considerations. Bottom line is that traffic issues are a valid consideration for the P and Z. And as I stated earlier, a detailed traffic study is in the process of preparation and will be submitted to the P and Z as part of the special exception application. Similarly, environmental issues are a valid consideration for the Conservation Commission, but neither traffic nor environmental issues are relevant to this ZBA application. There will be town of Fairfield use of this rink. The details of that has not, have not been worked out. Back to the matter is, the university has some significant issues on its plate with the pandemic, and the use of the hockey arena is not first in line of their concerns at this point in time. Otherwise, Mr. Chairman, I think I've made our case repeatedly. I think that this is a reduced application from that approved by the commission in December. It's a unique piece, and it's a unique use. It's a building which accomplishes the purpose and intent of the height regulations in that it will not be visually intrusive on any neighbors and is significantly lower by 35 and 44 feet respectively than existing buildings that are on campus today. It's an important amenity for the university, and I hope the Zoning Board of Appeals sees fit to grant its approval. Thank you for your time and attention.
Thank you, Attorney Fitzpatrick. This time, the public hearing section is closed. I didn't know if before we started to, if any of the board members needed to take a quick break, so before we return to discuss. Here we go. Jane's shaking her head. She's, she's ready to go. Terry, you ready to go?
Terry's ready to go.
Katie's ready to go. Sharon? Sharon, where are you?
Yes.
Okay, I didn't see on my, on my block screen. Okay, so you're ready to go?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Well, taking the matters in order that they are presented, the first matter that we have to consider is 101, Quinn Books Lane. Mr. Dan Marra presented the application to, well, legitimize a construction error. I would entertain a motion to approve that, and whoever is moving, please just say your name. I move to approve.
I, Terry Keegan, move to approve.
Thank you, Terry. Is there a second?
Hi, Jane Gitlinis Paul, second.
Thank you, Jane. Okay, discussion.
Such a little impact.
And the lot is much smaller than is required, and it's a, it's a minor issue as well. The neighbors do not mind it. So bring it to a vote. I know we normally follow that, that same order over from next to Josephine, and Jane was usually sitting there.
Not anymore. I'm at the other, I'm in Duncan's old seat at the other end.
Oh, the secretary would sit there. All right, so I will call, Sharon, what is your vote on the first?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay. Katie was normally sitting to my right?
Yes.
And Jane?
Yes.
All right, number two, 635 Stillson Road, that's been approved. Sorry, Mr. Dan Marra, if you're listening. 635 Stillson Road, petition of the Mcnos, and Mr. Mcno presented the application as to construct a second-floor dormer. Entertain a motion to approve.
Hi, Sharon Strelzer, motion to approve.
Thank you, Sharon. Is there a second?
I, Katie O'Grady, motion to approve.
Second. You got a second it?
Second, sorry. Motion to second.
You don't have to, you could just say, I second. I, Katie's second.
I second. It's been a while, I'm rusty.
It's all right. And discussion.
This is what variances were designed to do.
Yeah, the.
To grant permission for things just like this.
I agree. Any, any other discussion? Bring it to a vote. Sharon?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
Katie? Jane?
Yes.
Granted. Mr. Mcno, Mr. and Mrs. Mcno. 96 Medley Road, petition of Lawson's. Mr. Lawson presented the application. It's to construct a one- and two-story addition. Entertain a motion to approve.
Jane, so moved.
Jane has moved. Is there a second?
Terry Keegan, seconds.
Thank you, Terry. Okay, discussion. Again, we had a lot size, smaller than required. I think it's probably a reasonable request for that area.
I agree.
I agree.
All right, bring it to a vote. Sharon?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
Katie? Jane?
Yes.
Thank you. That's been granted. Number four, 661 Old Post Road, petition of the Episcopal Church. They presented it to install a generator. Entertain a motion to approve.
Hi, Sharon Strelzer, motion to approve.
Thank you, Sharon. Is there a second?
Jane, seconds.
Thank you, Jane. Discussion.
I'm satisfied that it's not going to be flooded, which would be.
The purpose of it, yes.
Yes, exactly, because most of the properties south of the Old Post Road put their generators on platforms. This one is on the ground, but I've been told that it will not get flooded, so we'll go with that.
Okay. Any other discussion? Bring it to vote. Sharon?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
Katie?
Yes.
Jane?
Yes.
Thank you. Application granted. Number five, 1810 Fairfield Beach Road, petition of the Davies. Attorney Russo presented this. It's to construct the rear screen porch. Entertain a motion to approve.
Jane moves to approve.
Thank you, Jane. A second?
Sharon, seconds.
Thank you, Sharon. Discussion.
I think it has minimal impact on the neighborhood.
Reasonable.
Yeah, the pictures were helpful. The, the area where it is, it's not going to interfere with the, neither the either side of them. All right, bring it to a vote. Sharon?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
Jane?
Yes.
Granted, thank you. Number six, 1896 Fairfield Beach Road, petition of Fairfield Pine Creek LLC. I would entertain a motion to approve with the condition that the type and style of fence, as depicted in the plan submitted, must be maintained, and that's the only type that can be built. With that condition, do I, do I have a motion to approve?
Jane motions to approve.
With that condition, Jane?
Yes.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I, Terry Keegan, second with that condition.
Thank you, Terry. Discussion.
Seems reasonable.
You know.
It looks nice, nice fence.
It's a safety issue, and if we didn't approve it and somebody got hurt, we would.
I certainly understand the reason for that regulation, and putting some fencing on that bulkhead is, is a good idea to vary that regulation, especially if it doesn't intrude, like this one does not intrude on anyone's view. So bring it to a vote. Sharon?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
Katie? Jane?
Yes.
Jane?
Yes.
All right. Okay, the next item that's been granted is, it's listed as 1609, but it's really 1623 Fairfield Beach Road. It's listed as both. Petition, Mr. Sargent, is to reverse, modify a decision, the zoning department regarding issuing zoning compliance for property at 1623 Fairfield Beach Road. So this is seeking to overturn. So the application wants it to be overturned. Motion to approve that application.
Jane moves to approve.
Okay, is there a second?
I'm sorry, I'm hearing another conversation.
Okay, is there a second? It needed to be second so we can discuss it. Can I have a second to the motion?
Kevin, can they not hear you?
Terry, Katie, can you hear Kevin?
Question, what happens if no one seconds it?
Right.
We can't, we can't discuss it until it'll be brought up on a new hearing next time. It's just going to get.
Then motion, yeah. Katie, motion to second.
Okay, thank you. All right, discussion. Okay, we heard, we heard, we saw a lot, and we heard from Mr. Sargent, and Attorney Green and his. we heard, we saw a lot, and we heard from Mr. Sargent and Attorney Green and his client on this. So let's have some discussion about 1623.
I think that the fact that you have to attach specific architectural plans and elevations of all views as part of the application implies that that's part of the application, and that's what you want to do. And so to substitute another completely different set of plans is not consistent with, you know, the job of this application. It's like bait and switch, especially if we are looking at other applications where people have to come in and file applications for, you know, 0.3% of something. So, and this is so different. Different architect, different style of house, different everything. It's a different project altogether.
Well, I agree in part with what you're saying, Jane, but the purpose of the submittals is so we can understand the project, to gain a scope of it. But our variances are specific and detailed is to a particular, you know, variance, whether it's a setback, whether it's height, whether it's, you know, floor area, whether it's lot coverage.
Then why do we bother have to supply all the architectural plans? Why don't we just give them site plans?
You could. You'd have a lesser chance of getting it approved.
It's not part of, but the application requires architectural plans, including elevations, all elevations.
And, but our formulaic height is what it is. And the problem I have, I can understand the bait and switch argument, but nine years is a little bit hard for me to grasp a bait and switch, and I respect Mr. Sargent and his comments, but nine years is not fraud. If you're going to commit fraud, you're going to do fraud quickly.
I'm not saying this is fraud. I'm just saying this is a different project, so.
That's what bait and switch is. Bait and switch is fraudulent.
I use it colloquially, but this is a different project altogether.
Wasn't, wasn't the change in design necessitated by a change in survey over the years?
Yeah, and that's what, they had a 2,000-square-foot takeaway to their lot, to the usable space.
So they had to alter, sounds like.
I had what? No, what?
They had, I mean, they had, it wasn't a bait and switch. They were just, they had, they were, they were, had to alter their plans based on change in their lot size.
So it's a different project.
I guess I'm confused because it seems like it is a different, I don't think they did this. I don't think they did this to be bait and switch. I think.
I'm sorry, I take, I apologize. I wasn't accusing anybody of doing anything on their hand.
I know the applicant, the applicant was saying they were. I didn't get that sense. I got the sense that the land changed due to, you know, the hurricane, and the project sat, and they had delays, and they had a lot of different measures to go through, and they did all their due diligence. So somewhere along the way, they should have come back in and asked for variance to match the current project, so I'm kind of on the fence about this because I understand the variance stays with the property, but on the other hand, it is a completely different project, and the variance was based on plans that were submitted for that project. If that's, is that what Jane is saying?
Right, this is a different project.
Yeah, but.
It's not attached. It's not attached to the original application.
Then why do we go so, to so much trouble of attaching conditions on particular plans? Because we know that plans can change. We know that you might have to change style. You might have to change a particular room. You might have to change a bump out. You might have to change something.
I think this is a significant change. I think this is a significant change.
But, but the calculation of the height based the one way we calculate our height in our regs, we can't change the way we calculate stuff.
Their original application states they're going to have a flat roof.
And a deck, and a deck.
Well, the deck aside, they say there's going to be a flat roof, so we're talking about height.
The deck is a red herring. It's.
The deck has nothing to do with anything.
We're talking about height, and the way the height of the structure is measured, this, the town believes complies with it. Mrs. Sargent doesn't think so because he's saying now you have pitched roof, and you have more of it up into that space. You know, it's the same thing. If we give a setback for something and they come to build something within that setback, it's over next to it, it's still within the setback. It's different, but it's still within the setback.
I guess my question is, would they have had the hardship if they had presented these plans? Original, if they, like, if, you know, that was the only thing that confused, I'm being honest. I'm not an expert. I'm just a little confused. So like, if they were saying they had all these different hardships, and that's why they needed that original variance, but I don't know, I'm just a little confused because it seems like the whole project changed, and therefore, if they'd submitted it, it might have been a whole different thing that we would have said in terms of variance or conditions or something else, because they're building upwards of a room. I don't know. I'm just, sorry, I'm just a little confused. And I, I'm going to also admit that I had a hard time seeing the screen and the PDFs during the presentation.
Well, we're not here to to redetermine what was, what was determined in 2011. We're here to make the determination of whether what the zoning department did is, is accurate because they believed that this new submittal complies with our regulations as well as the regulation that was varied, i.e. the height for this particular property.
So that's my question to everyone, that that variance of height might not have been given if it was this particular project.
You get to decide that, Sharon. We don't.
I don't know. I'm asking. That's why I'm asking.
Just the fact that the original application says it's going to be a flat roof, doesn't that make it a condition of the description of it? Why not?
No, doesn't make it, it doesn't make it part of it as, because it's a variance of the height. They could have, they could have said it was going to be a, an A-frame, which would, which would go up 15 feet.
Right. But, but they made a point of saying it, just like, just like the fence that we just approved, we made it a condition of.
Let her hear me out. Take my example, okay? You've been down, you've been down the road of Penfield, right? And you see that there's an A-frame there?
Yeah.
Okay. Now, what we do is we take that middle level of that, okay, and that is that height. So let's take that height, and now let's change it and make it a block square. That complies with zoning.
But this is not the same project.
I just did the opposite.
Well, I'm just saying this variance was granted for a particular design based on a flat roof that they specifically describe in the application. This is not that project at all that's underway.
I'm talking about the variance that was granted runs with the land, and it's a height. So I think the zoning department made the correct decision because we have a height regulation which was varied in 2011. And they made the decision that this fit within that varied height resonance. I think they made the proper decision.
I'm, I'm not disagreeing, but I think that the ability to reapply for a variance based on the current project is probably the right thing to do next. And let us look at it with fresh eyes.
Okay. Is there any other discussion? Okay, so now the vote, call on this because I don't want to have any errors, okay, because this is opposite of what we're doing. Mr. Sargent wants to reverse the decision of the zoning department saying there's a compliance. So if you vote yes, you are agreeing with Mr. Sargent and seeing to reverse the decision by the zoning department that compliance was proper. Okay? And push them, pushes them back. A yes pushes them back to the starting gate. Okay? So Sharon, how do you vote?
Like to say no, but I'm going to say yes.
Okay. Terry. Terry votes no. Katie?
Yes, Jane says yes.
I say no. The application was denied. Number eight, number eight.
Wait, no, the application was approved.
Approved.
These are four to one for it to be approved.
I said no. I mean, I, I.
Yeah, two said yes, and three said no.
I understand. Okay. Understood.
Eight A, eight B have been continued. Number nine, 3135 Easton Turnpike, petition of Sacred Heart University. Attorney Fitzpatrick presented for a height variance and permission to construct, relative to permission to construct a new hockey arena. Entertain a motion to approve.
Terry Keegan, so move.
Terry, second?
Jane seconds.
Jane? Okay, discussion.
I have a question, Kevin. So are we voting on, you just said it's a permission, approval of build the hockey arena. Are we voting on permission to get the variance, the height variance only?
Yes. Not too different from our prior discussion. We, we know what they want to put there. It's helpful for us consideration, but we're voting on a height variance. We don't get to approve.
Well, no, that's exactly, like, wait, we're approving the whole thing.
Anything goes there, you know, an auditorium, hockey arena, baseball stadium, we don't get to, we don't approve that, but we just approve the height.
Want to clarify.
Has to approve the height. So discussion on this.
I'm, I'm not clear what the hardship is when I ask specifically. Attorney. But that's not what a hardship is. It's not about the identity of the applicant. It's about the condition of the land, and I'm not, I didn't really hear that as a hardship. Did I miss here? Did somebody hear differently?
I did not hear that either.
No, but it talked about the uniqueness, and it's, we don't base our decisions upon prior communication, but I've been on the board a long time, and I can tell you that a university located in a residential area is permitted. Churches, colleges, stuff like that are permitted as schools, obviously. And when you have such a large piece in an R3, that is very unique, and what I think Attorney Fitzpatrick was saying is that you have this unique piece of property that they can spread the buildings out, not interfere. So this height restriction, which is four-half-acre lots, is really not applicable to this, and it's unfair to this piece of property because of its uniqueness in size and use to impose this restriction. It's no different than Fairfield University. It's no, and the height variances that we give there, it's no, no different than the applications for both the, for, I don't think the school, Ludlow High School had it, but Ward had it because we needed, it was such a unique piece. We needed to put, we needed variances to put all of the the solar panels, because all those constituted lot coverage. So you, obviously, you wouldn't be able to do something like that on, you know, a half-acre piece of property. But we needed to percentage, you know, that has all that space. It's a unique piece of property, and it's unfair, just like at Ward, to impose the lot coverage at Ward for that. It's unfair for imposing the height restrictions when we go to Fairfield University to allow the dorms to be consistent, and that's why I think Mr. Herrick and Attorney Fitzpatrick presented that this is lower than the two buildings that are already there. And the other point I was thinking is, the, well, Sacred Heart, which we approved a while ago, was the light stanchions for the stadium. And his point of this, this height, this building needs to be a certain height because of restrictions of being able to play in that stadium and having what the, what the NCAA requires. Similarly, with the lights, they needed a certain amount of foot candles on the field for it to be safe. So, and to get that, you had to go above 40 feet because not only buildings are 40 feet, but the light poles constitute, and they can't be more than 40 feet. So, you know, this building has to be this certain height. So I think we have two different types of hardships there, and I respect all the people that are concerned, but we're only talking about the height. We're not talking about noise. We're not talking about traffic. We're not talking about environmental. We're only talking about the height, and we shouldn't use those issues to interfere with a decision on a height variance.
Right.
As soon as the ZBA said, approved it in December, they came out and issued a press release that they could go forward. So it does seem like our decision is extremely impactful. They were not waiting for wetlands. They were not waiting for other committees to meet. They were waiting for our variance, because our variance is, really is the deal breaker where they, whether they can build this arena. It is their choice to put an arena on the campus, which they're entitled to. They also could have put it on main campus. They chose to put dormitories. Again, their choice. This was their long-term plan, and as, you know, faith is not here, but as she had said last time, I don't see what the true benefit of the university is giving back to the community. Mr. Fitzpatrick did not state, he said that it was not a, his words were, the ice rink is not a priority right now to the university. So therefore, he couldn't commit to what they were going to do in terms of representation for the town in terms of usage. So, I mean, if nothing else, if we are going to say yes, there should be some major conditions against this.
Well, you can't put a condition on how someone's going to use their property. That's actually illegal.
And the condition about fences, we told them how they had to design their fence.
They agreed to that. We can't enforce a condition.
We can request a condition.
For use, you can't, you can't, they've tried.
We've done it in the past.
Not for how to use the property and who gets to use the property. It's, it's, it's a Connecticut State Constitution Supreme Court decision. I've looked it up because people raised it with the lights at, at. I'm very familiar with the issue.
It, it just, it just seems that it's, it's going to be a one-sided project, and that the hardship is, they've called it a hardship, but they could put other things on that property. They have 63 acres to do anything they want. They could put running tracks. They could do anything they want with that property.
And you would grant everyone that had a height variance request?
I didn't hear you, Kevin.
Would you grant everyone that had a height variance request?
Everyone, who's, who is everyone?
No, all the other uses that they could put to the property. Would you okay every height variance request?
It depends. No, I'm, I'm thinking, I'm, no, I hear you, and I'm thinking, I'm thinking about it, but, you know, I mean, it's a very different type of request.
Leaving, I'm plugging in, I'm listening.
Okay, your voice was scattering. It's just a very different usage, so, I mean, and no one else was looking at usage, but
Sharon, Sharon, if this was, Sharon, if this was a museum of the same size, the same height, just they called it a museum, would you have a problem with that?
I have to think about it because possibly yes.
I just think it's important, it's not, it's, it's not fair to the university for this board to consider traffic and noise.
I hear you, and I heard what Mr. I respect, I respect that. I hear that. I heard that, yes.
Our roles are, are tight and limited, and it's too.
I just don't see the, I just don't see the hardship. I'm sorry. I just don't see it.
Yeah, then there'd be no.
The hardship, the museum could be built, Jane, a museum could be built at any height, and this is, I guess that's the hardship, is that they can't build if they don't get this. I'm not, I still don't understand what the hardship is.
It's just that putting a height restriction on a piece of property like this, when they can put a building in which will not impact any other regulation, even come close to it, that in itself is a hardship to this piece of property, just like we considered it a hardship to, in the same thing to Fairfield University, when they wanted to put dorms on. I mean, even Sacred Heart. I mean, we found it to be a hardship to put the height restriction on the dorm. to put the height restriction on, on the dorms. It's a no different analysis, it's the size of this property.
Well, you're making a better case than Mr. Fitzpatrick made, so.
So I have one other question. Under the, our definition of hardship, it also talks about the absence of a negative change in the neighborhood should the variance be granted. Is there, will there be a negative change to this neighborhood if we grant this? That's, can we talk about that?
Sure, yeah. I mean, I don't think so, I've lived in this area for 27 years. I've been up and down that road every single day of my legal career, going back and forth through that intersection in the morning and in the afternoon. And God forbid, I wanted to get to my house off of the Merritt at 5:00 because I couldn't get through the intersection when GE was there. This is going, it's not, and that's every day, that's every single day, and in the morning.
But there's a negative, but Kevin, there's a negative noise impact. You know, the people from GE are not leaving honking their horns, you're not gonna have 600 cars.
Sharon, we can't, we can't talk about.
But you just, but you just said about negative impact, so what's the negative?
Asking, okay, so, okay, that's what, okay, I'm just asking.
That is a negative impact, there's a difference. You can't compare people working to people excited leaving a hockey game.
I was talking about traffic, if you want to talk about noise, this is indoors, we're not gonna have the noise.
When they drive, when they drive, they honk.
Helicopters.
We, we have honking all over Fairfield right now, they do honk.
That's just not fair to comment on that.
I was being sully, I, that was, okay. I was being facetious, I was being facetious, okay, but.
We're complaining on negative effect on a neighborhood because people are honking in joy over something?
Well, there are people who, hockey games, hockey games don't take, they take place in the evenings, they, some people sleep. Yes, I do think that that's a negative impact. And there are people, there are, the people who, who live nearby, there are a lot of seniors who live nearby, they have conditions that are impactful by noise. My mother's 94, you did something like that, she could have a heart attack. So I honestly, I do think it is impactful.
These people have lived behind a football stadium that's been there since before Stratfield Falls was built, and, and athletic fields, and a university that's been there since Stratfield Falls was built. And they've lived next to the Merritt Parkway since Stratfield Falls was built.
But it's not a group of people, it's not 600 cars exiting at once right in front of your home honking, and that is what happens in front of hockey game. My husband produces these games for CBS. I've been to many of them, and that is what happens.
I go to every home football game, I'm one of the only UConn football fans.
I know you are, I know you are.
And I'm not honking my horn as I'm trying to leave. And no one's honking their horns as they're trying to leave the football game.
Okay.
I don't, I mean, when you want to leave, you want to get out of there.
I mean, honking out of excitement, that's what I mean, not honking because you can't move.
The few wins that UConn has, I have never heard that people honking their horns leaving the stadium.
UConn's a very different setup, I think, I, I, I just did.
Well, UConn Stadium is in the middle of a residential neighborhood in East Hartford.
It's in Hartford, it's in Hartford.
It's in East Hartford.
At East Hartford, yes.
It's in the middle of a residential neighborhood. You drive through, they redirect the traffic through the residential neighborhood to make it easier to, to get to the highway.
Well, I think that there are neighbors saying that they're gonna be impacted, and we have letters, and in the past, the boards considered the letters they've received from the neighbors.
We always consider them, but.
Can I ask one more question? The only way in and out of the campus is past that guardhouse, right?
Yes.
Correct, yes.
So, okay.
Which goes either straight.
Jefferson to the highway, or, yeah.
If they live in downtown Fairfield, they might take a right up on that eastern turnpike area.
People are dispersed.
Yes.
Three directions.
You go south, you go straight, you go north.
And when you, and when you have to go through that section, say between 3:00 in the afternoon and 6:30 in the afternoon, if you have to go there to the mall or anyplace, you're at a standstill on a good day, that's without an event. And they also were not clear last time either whether this was just gonna be for hockey use, or, what you said, we can't restrict usage, so they can have concerts there or other events, correct? They can have, they can have other events there as well.
It's kind of hard to have a concert on a, on the, on the ice rink, it's not.
No, they just cover it, they just cover it, it's amazing what you can do with ice rinks, I've seen it many times.
I understand your concerns, I know you don't like the application, Sharon, but I think it's a good thing for the town, I think it's gonna support a university that supports the town, and I too, I clearly think there's a hardship because if there wasn't, we, we should go, we, we should go turn back and, and have them tear down all the dorms, and tear down the lights, and tear down the solar panels.
Sharon, unfortunately, we, you know, as, as board members, we kind of have to put blinders and look at the specific thing that's being asked of us.
Right. A museum wouldn't create the same kind of impact that, with this, what they're talking about. So, I mean, you said about a museum, it's not the same thing.
Saying, that was to respond to your suggestion about use, but as, we can, we're being asked about height, we can't really make a decision either way about noise.
I still don't see why this, why this is, why this is a height issue. I mean, they could use that land for something else. Just because it's 63 acres and that's their decision doesn't make it a hardship. That's just the way I feel, we're gonna go straight to that. And I do think the neighbors' voices need to be heard. That's what, that's what I feel.
Any other discussion? Okay. Let me get my tablet. Okay, Sharon?
As much as I love ice rinks, I feel that this isn't not a, there's not a demonstrated hardship, so I'm gonna say no.
Terry?
Terry Keegan votes yes.
Katie? Jane?
Can I qualify my answer as I give it to you?
It's.
This is not, has no educational purpose, there's plenty of universities and colleges that don't play hockey. It's a moneymaker for the university, the, the town gets some benefit out of it, but because this is only, as a board member, having to make a decision about a height, I have to say yes.
Yes. All right, thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, for our first ever teleconference, took a little longer, apologize for the glitches, but thank you for your patience. Thank you for everyone who's still on, for your patience in listening, and hopefully we get it a little bit smoother with all, some of these bugs in June. All right, thanks, Matt, Emmeline, thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Thank you, bye-bye.
Thank you.
Thank you.